Welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. It's with great pleasure that I asked for a little bit of help with the Pledge of Allegiance today. We are honored to have our Girl Scout troop and we'll have some of the members come up and help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please step forward, girls. Very nicely done. Thank you for the help. Okay, Madam Clerk, can you call our role, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here. We do have any requests for a continuance of public items or hearings, my colleagues. We do have one little housekeeping part to put here in our consent items. There was a duplicate, 7D was the same as 7N. Those two were combined so that we can make that official. That weren't, it's not two separate items, it's simply the one. Now, I would like to call forward our Girl Scout troop. And I'm going to move down to the dais here and if you Girl Scouts can please, can please step over and we'll talk about what you've done here.
... manager here at the City of Thousand Oaks. And I am pleased to introduce the Girl Scouts of California Central Coast this evening. We've worked with this incredible group of young ladies, supportive parents and caregivers, for the last several months to build and develop an innovative new program for these scouts to earn a bronze award, the highest award a junior Girl Scout can earn. The goal was to explore an issue impacting their community and create a solution. Thanks to the council's action on acquiring the former Hillcrest Christian School site at 384 Herbs, we were able to use real-life examples and experiences to give these scouts things to discuss and to develop a thoughtful, affordable housing concept. The troops did formal presentations of these projects to city staff from Public Works, Community Development and Finance. I'd like to thank everyone who supported this effort. And I'd like to introduce Jocelyn of the Girl Scouts to share some of what came out of this innovative project and a few insights from one of our girls.
Good evening and thank you for having us tonight. I am Jocelyn Skelton, the Development Director for the Girl Scouts of California Central Coast. We are honored to be here highlighting these groups of young ladies for their impressive work on the Building Change One Brick at a Time Program. Our council received a LEGO grant in effort to engage more girls with a take-action project. In this effort, we wanted to give girls the hands-on experience on how they could take action in the community that they live and play in. We are so grateful to the City of Thousand Oaks for allowing 42 of our Girl Scouts to have a voice. These 4th and 5th graders range from 9 to 11 years old. And let me tell you, I got to hear a few of their project proposals and I was taken back with how imaginative, resourceful, thoughtful and forward-thinking they are. We have four models here today. Some of their building designs and floor plans and letters of advocacy for our Girl Scouts in finding homes for the homeless. It, I'm sorry, finding homes for the homeless. Because of you, our girls' voices felt heard. And what an incredible impact that has on young minds. It's because of this beautiful partnership that we have built together that set the pace for this program to be taken on the road council-wide across our six counties. Thank you again to the City of Thousand Oaks for supporting our Girl Scout mission of building girls of courage, confidence and character who make the world a better place. Amelia, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about your project?
We, as a group, Lady Riley and me, have come together to discuss what we think should be a good plan for this community. Nobody should be homeless because, well, it's not fair. And this plan of ours is really what brought us to think more and think, and to make our plans better than what we first had and more complex. We do not believe that anybody should be homeless. We believe everybody should be housed. And this residential area for the unhoused population is very important to everybody in this area.
Thank you to everyone who participated. Some of these models here, you'll see, they include housing, but also a wide array of amenities that the girls very thoughtfully planned and included, such as meditation stations, libraries, computer centers and all sorts of other options. So at this time, we'd love to take a few photos with the council. We're going to break the girls out by troop.
Very good. And thank you so much for the ideas that you've presented to us. I was pleased to be able to be at your original presentation a couple of weeks ago. And I was impressed by the thought that has gone into these models. So thank you so much and please come down by troop.
Yeah, they just leave them on the table.
Good night. Bye-bye. Was that it for tonight?
Well, that was something special. These girls put a lot of work into that and had a lot of great ideas. So thank them, we thank them from the bottom of our hearts for all this activity on such a great day. So I'm also pleased to have the opportunity to introduce our Caneo Recreation and Parks District team. And they will be giving the annual update on our many partnerships and how we make the community a great place to live and play. This November, they are celebrating 60 years of serving Thousand Oaks. Their parks and recreation programs help establish and maintain our quality of life, ensuring the health of our residents and contributing to our economic and environmental well-being. So please, I'll turn it over to our Park and Recs team.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and City Council members. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Patty Hamm and I'm the supervisor at the Goble Adult Community Center. My colleagues Julie Spivak, Director of Caneo Senior Volunteer Program, and Sarah Dob, Director of the Fabulous Teen Center. I believe that all of you have this flyer in front of you. I just want to mention, it emphasizes and shows all the... I just want to mention, it emphasizes and shows all the incredible partnerships that we share in the community to make this an amazing community for our patrons. But tonight, we'll just be focusing on the Goble Adult Community Center and the Teen Center. The city of Thousand Oaks and Canejo Recreation and Park District have been partners for the past 60 years. This essential relationship has done wonders for the quality of life for our residents, especially our treasured seniors and teens. After a very long 15 months of having to close due to COVID, staff and seniors alike were overjoyed when we were able to resume programming, services, special events, once again on June 28, 2021. Goble Center offers an amazing variety of classes, seminars, special events, drop-in activities, discussion groups, social services, and excursions for our seniors to enjoy daily. And as you can see, their pictures are kind of small, but on the bottom right, we have ballroom dance lessons, top middle, our bingo program three times a week is still very popular with over 100 attendees coming every time. Left, we have our beginning knitting class. And then bottom left, we have, looks like another ballroom class. And then in the middle, we have Larry Janz, who came out for a special event to talk to the seniors about growing up in the Canejo Valley. The Goble Center has become a location that the County of Ventura values as a facility where they can best serve the East County residents. In 2021, Goble Center was a COVID vaccination site for five months and has since had several outdoor flu and COVID and booster clinics. And coming up June 7 and November 8, the Goble Center will be a polling destination as well. A huge benefit of our relationship is the improvement project happening right now at Goble. Our main hall is getting a new floor. The four looping rooms are getting new flooring, painting, and new room dividers. Our restrooms will be completely renovated, and we are looking forward to getting our seniors working out on the new outdoor fitness equipment in our own backyard.
Canejo Senior Volunteer Program's 900 volunteers are placed at 70 local partner agencies in and around the Canejo Valley. We are excited that many agencies are once again accepting volunteers. Just this past quarter, we have found a Spanish translator for Canejo Open Space Foundation, two very computer-savvy volunteers for our Volunteers in Policing, a cultural tours director for Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library, only to name a few. The grant-funded Senior Nutrition Lunch Program is for seniors 60-plus, and we serve lunch to 50-plus seniors a day. Volunteers are back in action, helping prep lunch in the kitchen, host in the cafe, and check in S&amp;P participants. Collectively, volunteers volunteer over 5,000 hours per year. We had a wonderful birthday celebration at our lunch program this past December for CSVP's 100-year-old volunteer. You can see in the top, a few of you were there, so thank you for coming to that. CSVP's Free Income Tax Program is in cooperation with the IRS and is in its 32nd year. This program took place February 1 through April 15 at Canejo Creek South Community Building, Monday through Friday from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. and at the Newberry Park Library from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We added both Mandarin and Spanish translation to our program this season. This dedicated team of 40 volunteers and greeters completed 2,188 free income tax returns this season, bringing close to half a million dollars back to our community. 80% of these returns were for seniors 60-plus. National Volunteer Month lands in April each year, and CSVP and its Advisory Council was beyond excited to bring back our first appreciation since 2019. We celebrated 300 volunteers with a delicious lunch, a rockin' band, ice cream treats, and raffle prizes. CRPD board members and Thousand Oaks City Council members joined us to recognize our volunteers. On August 7, 2022, 20 karaoke singers will compete onstage at the Canyon Agora Hills with a live band to raise money for local nonprofit organizations. The 2018 and 2019 events raised over $70,000 for our local nonprofits, and we are very excited to bring this event back this summer with even more prizes and some other fun additions. Make sure to check out charitykaraoke.org to support your favorite nonprofit and to purchase tickets. And you can see, we have some really fantastic organizations that are going to be here this summer. Thank you.
I just wanted to jump in there really quick. I will be a featured singer there, so if anybody is interested, I'm taking any and all donations for charity, so.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Don't sing far, far away.
Summer.
Sorry for the diversion.
Okay, no problem. Summer 2021 at the Thousand Oaks Teen Center. Program rosters filled up quickly upon opening post-pandemic closure. Based off of our registration numbers, the public was very anxious to return. We held 49 classes and camps totaling 585 teens registered just for the summer session, and we have tracked a very successful year as well, with the uncounted numbers that we take for drop-in recreation. Programs we have seen increase in attendance to over the past year includes the High School Hoops Basketball League, middle school sport leagues, which are in collaboration with the Canejo Valley Unified School District, Battle of the Bands, which is a high school concert featuring local student musicians competing for an annual title, winter outings, including two trips to Mountain High for some snow fun, middle school douses, homeschool classes with various skill-building programs, including art, mountain biking, and of course, we can't forget about our drop-in recreation option, which is free to the teens in our local community. Lastly, though our building is closed through most of this summer, we are thrilled to see progress done to the backyard area with escape plaza footings in place and the renovation happening inside. Many of you were at the groundbreaking, so thank you. Programs are currently taking place with the use of the Janz Marketplace at a storefront, Sycamore Canyon School Gym, and various other CRPD community centers. When we open late summer, we will be the place to hang out for sure. This concludes our presentation. In closing, we would like to thank the city for all the support and allowing us to serve our community. We are looking forward to showing off our facilities to the community once construction is complete, but in the meantime, we'll continue to serve how we can in anticipation and excitement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. Please, give them a big round of applause. It's a pleasure to be in partnership with the Recreation Parks District. It's a, almost, I won't say it's unique, but it's definitely prized here in the Canejo Valley. So thank you for everything you do and how we can support you. Okay, we have one other presentation tonight, and that presentation is by our own Ventura County Fire Department to talk to us about fire resiliency. Fire resiliency is a topic that is near and dear to my heart, and I'm very proud to welcome our local experts to help share and give this information for our public. I'm going to call down Jeff Shea, who is our Thousand Oaks Fire Chief. I'm also going to have Chad Cook, one of our deputy chiefs, to come on down, along with Scott Thompson and Larry Williams, experts in the field of wildland firefighting. So gentlemen, thank you, and I'm looking forward to your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and Council members. Again, as you mentioned, I'm joined on my left by Ventura County Fire Department Deputy Chief Chad Cook. On his left, Scott Thompson, our Public Relations Director, and Larry Williams, our Fire Hazard Reduction Program Director. As we mentioned, we'll be discussing fire risk and hazard reduction. And the theme of this presentation is that extreme drought requires vigilance in preventative measures and response. So tonight, we'll be discussing our fire risk, prevention efforts, added resources, the Ventura County Fire Department's outreach campaign, and we'd welcome the opportunity to answer any questions that may present themselves. So our fire risk, this is a picture of the Thomas Fire in 2017. Again, just to refresh all our memories of the impacts of wildland fire here in Ventura County. Severe drought is increasing the risk of wildfires. I don't think that's anything, any news to anyone here, but currently, our current conditions with early rains last winter, it spurred vegetation growth that's adding to the potential fuel for wildfires. So what that means is our grass crop that came with that rain, now with the onset of the drought, those grass crops have dried out and obviously are susceptible to wildland fire. Of note is, we've already seen wildland fire activity within the region, and specifically, two weeks ago in Orange County, in Laguna de Gel, they had a 200-acre fire, multiple residential structures destroyed. And last week, Kern County had 500 acres just outside of Tehachapi. So here's a picture of the Springs Fire in 2013. That's at Camrio Springs, if you're familiar with the area. There's the golf course in the lower left-hand corner, and the Mobile Home Park, and then obviously the Camp Springs area. Our fire risk, many of the state's largest fires have taken place in the last five years. In 2017, the Thomas Fire was the largest fire in the state at the time. It is now number eight. Prevention efforts, this is a photo of some defensible space in the Westlake area, specifically the North Ranch area of Thousand Oaks following the Westlake Fire in the mid-2000s. Oops, sorry. And prevention efforts. Ventura County Fire Department's Fire Hazard Reduction Program is nationally recognized for reducing the risk to homes and businesses. And this year, 18,000 properties were sent notice outlining the minimum vegetation management requirements. And we've noticed that Ventura County community is very supportive of the program, and that's evidenced by a 99.9% compliance rate without Ventura County Fire Department intervention. Additional prevention efforts, Ventura County Fire Department supports six fire-safe councils across the county, and we work with them and other groups to educate people about how to further reduce their homes from fire risk. And this includes home hardening measures, which include utilizing fire-resistant materials, vent screens, and other materials to reduce ignition potential. And the goal of home hardening combined with our Fire Hazard Reduction Program is to reduce the vulnerability of structures and parcels in a cost-efficient and implementable way. Home hardening combined with Fire Hazard Reduction, with the Fire Hazard Reduction Program is intended to allow structures in the wildland urban interface to stand alone and survive fire and ember exposures without contributions from first responders. This was found necessary as field data has demonstrated that wildfire progression can quickly outpace the efforts of first responders during large and/or concurrent wildland urban interface fires. Simply, in the event of a wind-driven brush fire, there are limited fire resources to protect all structures that are threatened. And these findings were published in the National Institute of Standards and Technology 2022 Wildland Urban Interface Structure Parcel Community Fire Hazard Mitigation Methodology Report. Fire prevention staffs also involved in review of laws, regulations, ordinances regarding fire safety for communities. Staff participate in multiple state committees and workgroups related to wildland fire impacts. Ventura County Fire Department Resources and Response Capacity. Two Firehawk helicopters were added in 2021. This increased their payload. We're able to drop 1,000 gallons of water per load with these Firehawk helicopters, which is an increase from the 320 gallons of our legacy helicopter fleet. We've added a third wildland hand crew, staff for 2022, and we'll continue training. This includes mutual aid system participation. We sent one strike team to Orange County, which is five fire engines with a battalion chief as leader, to the recent brush fire down there. And we have incident management participation, mutual aid. We currently have 12 personnel who were name-requested to assist in wildland fire management in New Mexico. And the value of that is that they'll bring back their skills and experience and utilize at our wildland fire incidents. Our outreach program, our PIO and Public Relations with fire-safe councils, HOAs and community groups, we continue to interact with them, and we're launching a wildfire safety education campaign. The Ventura County Fire Department hopes that you'll join us in sharing those safety messages. And if there are any questions of the council, we'd be happy to answer them.
Colleagues, any questions? Claudia.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Good evening, and thank you very much for the presentation. Appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. First, home hardening. Is that something that residents need to do themselves, following directions or guidance? Or are there businesses, companies that can actually come to your home and do it for you?
Good evening, Larry Williams. The home hardening, which is actually, it's a home ignition zone assessment program. Right now, most of them are being done with some of the fire-safe councils. We're working with them on that. The Fire Department will be implementing that as soon as we get done with our brush season this year, our inspection program. We put staffing to put that together and then go out and do that. Our intent is to be able to do those at no charge to the community, to the residents. Right now, you pretty much, the state is developing a curriculum and a certification program statewide that was required by law, and it's mainly intended for qualified individuals or groups. Fire-safe councils, California Conservation Corps, registered foresters and stuff. It's not really intended for the private businesses in there. Most of it's coming from grassroots, community-based, and/or from the fire departments.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And the second question is, is there any discussion to perhaps amend the brush clearance guidelines or policy, expanding them from, say, 100 feet to 200 feet, 300 feet, or more?
At this point, again, it's going to remain at 100 feet. That's constantly being assessed, but the science has shown, and studies have shown, that the 100 feet allows for a buffer against conductive heat, convective heat, and radiant heat, with also allowing for the balance of the environmental totality, the impacts, the erosion control, the plants and/or animals that are also utilize the space. So we found that the 100 feet is that, at this point, is the appropriate spacing to get us that buffer, again, from conductive, convective, and radiant heat during a wildland fire.
Thank you. And the reason I'm mentioning this is because I receive many inquiries from residents worried about, who have seen the Woolsey Fire or the Thomas Fire, but here in this case, Woolsey Fire, concerned that 100 feet is not enough. So maybe we can help with our, through our website, to educate and inform the public about the science that's behind the 100 feet at this point, just so that residents have a better understanding as to what our policy is. Thank you.
I had a quick question for you all. The fire-safe councils in Ventura County obviously have their own websites and everything that give out the information. Does, what is your website on the county fire that would give people some information as far as how to do some home hardening and the importance of the reduced fuel loads within the 100 feet of a home?
So we'd welcome anybody to come to vcfd.org to check out some of those pieces of information that you just described, as well as others that we'll be planning to add in the weeks coming ahead as we ramp up this outreach campaign. We're also planning to prepare a set, like, an information kit that the city of Thousand Oaks and other municipalities in the area, we're hoping will. we're hoping will partner with us to share that information as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, I don't know if, where I, I think I saw it on TO TV, a section on home hardening too, so that you don't have leaves in your gutter of your roof and so forth. So we may have that. Does everybody know if we have that on TO TV?
Yes, we have had it on the TV. I think my takeaway really, Councilmember Jones, is that it's a partnership really between the fire and homeowners that really would have the most effect in reducing fire hazards. So.
You say a partnership?
A partnership between the homeowners and the professional firefighters that we have ready to respond.
Do you mean that they should meet with them, or what?
Whatever it takes. I think there's information out there for homeowners to review. But it's a partnership. Really, you have to home harden your home, and then the fire service can be there when you need them.
Yeah, I might just say that if it is on TO TV, people could watch it and see what these preventative measures are. But I'm sure you're right, that the fire people would be very glad to meet with them. I'm glad we've had the 100 feet, because as I understood it, in earlier years, LA County had 50 feet, and they had a lot more fires. Up until our terrible fires of 2018, we were, you know, went many years without losing a house in Ventura County. I, that's a little different now, but I guess it's because of the drought. I'm not sure. But 100 feet was promoted as an improvement on LA County. I don't know about other counties. So I appreciate all the good work the fire people are doing. Thank you.
I was just going to say, to that point, our deputy chief for the county, Chad Cook, is here. He's one of the, folks may not know this, but Chad's one of the top wildland, considered one of the top wildland fire leaders in the country. And so maybe you could speak to that, having been on dozens of fires over the course of your career here, and what's, you know, what you've seen on the front lines from impacts over the last handful of years.
Thank you. Yeah, my name's Chad Cook, and I'm the deputy fire chief for Ventura County Fire. A little bit about my background. So I'm a Type 1 Operation Section Chief with the federal government. And what it basically means is, since 2007, I have tried to build my resume to manage large-scale wildfire. I will say that the management of the fire and coming in after the effects to come into communities really isn't the education. You see what works and you see what doesn't work. So you glean experience from those things. But what you really glean from it is you get to see the after-effects of the communities, and you get to see how things come together and the true effects of fire. I will tell you that when Mother Nature flips on the switch and the fan comes on, and in Ventura County, we all know that we have a phenomenon here called the Santa Ana Winds, the East Winds, and we are a corridor using the Santa Monica Mountains, using our ocean as a low-pressure system, and using the deserts that are not far from us as a high-pressure corridor for compressed heat and heating that funnels through Ventura County. In the fall, or even in the winter months, when we're under those Santa Ana wind conditions, we see relative humidities drop down to virtually nothing. We see wind in excess of 50, 60 miles an hour, which most people don't understand what 50 to 60 mile an hour wind does in a fire environment. I will tell you that I have managed some of the largest wildfires in the state, and I have had probably more failures than I've had successes. And I have seen a lot of things in that time. And I will tell you that the Ventura County Fire Department takes this very seriously when we try to apply our actual efforts to what we've seen and what our people bring back to the agency, especially for our communities that we protect. Jeff briefly touched on our members that are in New Mexico right now. I was on the phone to them earlier today. The fuel models that they see are very, very close to what we see here in Ventura County, especially outside of Las Vegas, New Mexico, where the main camp is held for the fire right now. Having our people there and being able to relate to the fuel model that's there, you start looking at all these different things, and you realize that it's no different than being in Ventura County. And so I will tell you, I thank you for the vote of confidence as far as we, when we look at management of large-scale wildfire. But in the big picture, what we're doing here in Ventura County involves all types of sciences. We have several members of our department that sit on the Fire Scope Committee for the State of California. We are a State of California contract county. Ventura County is one of six contract counties. That is Orange County, Los Angeles, Ventura, Santa Barbara, Kern, and Marin, where we are part of, actual partners with CAL FIRE, where we actually take our team of people and we blend it with CAL FIRE for not only incident management, but for sciences across the board to see how we do things collectively at a state level, and we can apply that locally. And I will tell you that Ventura County has a great group of people that are continually looking at our best efforts and how we can better apply those to our communities.
Thank you. Councilmember Adam, you had a.
Oh, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, you bring up an excellent point. In a wind-driven fire, which most of them seem to be, as I understand it, these embers can blow for literally miles. I remember, pardon me, in the Woolsey Fire, jumped the 101 freeway. And I don't know how wide that is, but it's a lot more than 100 feet. So to me, the key is hardening your home, because that's, if these embers get under an eve or something, that could be the beginning of the end. And, you know, as you look around Thousand Oaks, are there many homes left with shake roofs that you see? Have most people converted at this point?
I would say most people are converted. You could still see a shake roof or two in the Wildwood community, places like, some of our older neighborhoods, you could still see some. But for the most part, I think people have converted. But one of the key points you brought up was the home hardening and the wind. I will tell you that what causes, when we really examined the cultural aspects of wildfire in our community, we noticed that evacuations even play a role. When people are stressed and when evacuation buttons are triggered in the community, people often leave their house, and they leave it in a little bit of a disarray or disheveled to gather their family, their belongings, and they leave. What happens is often they don't go around and make sure all their windows are closed. They don't go around to make sure that their house is hardened when they're leaving, because they're in a state of, I don't want to call it panic, but they're in a state of despair where they need to get out of an area. So what ends up happening is you see a lot of the aftermath of fire is actually because of our own processes when our communities, our homes are stricken by wildfire, or they have it. And so there's a process that goes into it. And you see that homes burn because windows are left open, things are left unattended, doors are open, people leave hastily. And you realize, you go, wow, that home was 400 feet away from the fire, and it had a fire. And they go, well, there was an upstairs bedroom window that was left open, and the ember cast came through a bedroom window. Caught a bedspread on fire, and next thing you know, the attic is involved, and the houses can spread to the neighbor's house in the same wind conditions. What you really need to focus on is that the homes in the community are part of the fuel bed. It's not just the brush. It is the complete community is the fuel bed, especially when driven by wind. If you were to look at some pictures of the City of Thousand Oaks from many, many years ago, you see a young community that has trees that aren't matured, things that haven't happened, and you say, well, what's different from the '70s to today? And as you look at that maturity and you look at aerial photos from several years ago, you see that neighborhood mature up, and you go, whoa, the vegetation has grown in. And you go, that whole community is more susceptible to wildfire than a younger community that doesn't have all the growth and vegetation around it. So you realize that we could be up against some very significant things, especially with drought, single-day watering, things like that. You realize that the entire fuel bed is the community. And when you pay attention to those sciences, you realize that what we're really looking at then is an aggressive approach to response, home hardening, and the things that we can do to alleviate that, especially on one's own property.
Those are very good points. That puts things in perspective I hadn't even thought about. Evacuation, a hasty evacuation could actually leave your home vulnerable. And that's something we need to educate our folks on. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and helping us get the education out there. I know in my fire career, the single thing that I took away from many incidents was the regret of when people felt that they had not prepared. And I think we all now have an opportunity to prepare, because we know that we do live in an area that does have, is subject to fire. Now is the time, before the fire gets here, to prepare, to have that plan of evacuation, to know what you're going to bring if you have to, if you ever have to leave your home. And do the home hardening that you need to do prior to the fire showing up your doorstep. So thank you for that. I know that we are going to have some more community outreach coming up here throughout the first part of the summer at least. So we invite you to join us for those as well. And thank you again for sharing your insights and expertise. Before we go into our regular meeting, I wanted to take just a moment to talk about recent events. Violence has touched our hearts again. Over the weekend, we had a young man in town who was stabbed and killed. And then today, children in Yuvalda, Texas, a town that none of us should even know about, has experienced the unthinkable. Thoughts and prayers is really now an empty saying. Every time this happens, we say, my thoughts and prayers are out there for them. It's almost getting to be recited on a weekly basis. So with that, I would call on all of us to just take a moment right now for some silent reflection on the violence that seems to have become part of our world. Please take a minute and just, let's think about it. Thank you all. I'm sorry we have to visit these things. Okay, we do have a couple of public comments, I believe. So Madam Clerk, if you can read the recitation.
This is a time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. We have two individuals that have requested to speak. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Okay, first up, we have Carol Shelton. Please come on down, Shelton, Ms. Shelton.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, councilmembers and city staff. My name is Carol Shelton, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm a membership of, I'm on the executive leadership of Thrive Keneho. I've come here to speak about the housing for the residents of Thousand Oaks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. As of January 2022, there are over 1,100 individuals served by a local regional center. It was hard to hear the responses about housing and housing for folks with ADD currently living in Thousand Oaks for several reasons during our last city council meeting. It highlighted a knowledge gap. And this gap prevents our city from having informed conversations with builders about incentives and funding to support housing options for folks with ADD. New builds can receive incentives and funding for set-asides and earmarking those units for folks with ADD. It also highlighted a medical model thinking mentality. This thinking is outdated. Our loved ones do not need something akin to a memory unit. They need safe, extremely low housing so that they can live independently in the community as contributing members of our society. People with ADD need long-term, extremely low-income housing for their entire adult lives. It appears that only current residents and prospective residents with noble professions are being planned for and accounted for in the affordable housing plans. Many believe that there is a siloed system and a funding model that allows our local regional center to fund housing. This is not the case. Our local regional center does not bear any responsibility to pay for housing costs. They can only pay for the supports and services that allows a person to live in their own home. Much like the City of Thousand Oaks or builders bear no responsibility to find or pay for the supportive services individuals with ADD need. The goals for folks with ADD is to be living in the community independently. The last option for our loved ones with ADD is to live in a group home, residential care facility, or other institution. Seven to a home will not solve the issue for Thousand Oaks. Currently, there are no group homes in Thousand Oaks, and it remains cost-prohibitive to start one. Again, Tri-County's Regional Center bears no fiscal responsibility to house the people it serves. I am happy to help city staff engage with appropriate entities to understand the problem so that our loved ones are planned for, advocated for, and direct efforts are made to find them a place to call home so that they can live independently in their own home, as is their right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Next up, we have LeAnn Holland.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, councilmembers and city staff. My name is LeAnn Holland, and I live in Newberry Park. I am the leader of Thrive Keneho. All of our leadership team members are parents of children with intellectual and developmental disabilities who live in Thousand Oaks. During last week's city council planning meeting, Councilmember McNamee posed the question, what are disability advocates asking us to do on the issue of housing? The lack of affordable housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities in our community is a well-known and longstanding problem. It particularly impacts those who live solely on supplemental social security income, known as SSI, which was about $954 per month for Californians last year. To those of us with family members impacted by the crisis, the lack of discussion or urgency surrounding this issue has been demoralizing. First, most of the discussion in council meetings thus far has centered around group homes or memory care-type facilities. Those are not the types of housing that we are seeking. While some people with ADD may need a group home, most do not. Group homes are highly restrictive settings, and we want our loved ones to be integrated into the community. The big fear for a lot of us is what happens to our children after we are gone. If you, our city leaders, have the will to do so, you can do two things to be in addressing the crisis. One, put together a team to research the true scope of the problem. And two, act as a convener for agencies, community groups, and experts to find innovative solutions. Thousand Oaks already has a community partner and potential model for this work, Mini Mansions. In addition, it's important to note that Tri-County's Regional Center will provide the wraparound services to people with ADD living in community-based housing. Our community was recently named as the third least affordable in the country. In my opinion, this places an extra responsibility on our elected and community leaders to address the growing gap between the haves and have-nots in our community. I don't want us to be a community that shrugs its shoulders as seniors lose their homes at an ever-growing rate, or turns a blind eye to the multiple families living in apartments meant for one, or throws up its hands at the idea that there's few places for people with ADD to live meaningful and fulfilling lives in our community. I want us to be the community that rolls up its sleeves and leads the way in this work. I hope you find it in your heart to agree. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. City manager, do you have any comments?
No.
It's our last speaker.
Yeah, only to say, for both speakers, I'm going to endeavor to have our community development director, Kelvin Parker, with our team working on the general plan and all the elements attached to that. I want to, you know, give them additional opportunities to continue to engage. So I'm going to have Mr. Parker catch up with them. And Melissa Hurtado, if you want to pop over there as well. That's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Bill DeLapena.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Just to add to this, I think this is important to be included in also in our inclusionary housing ordinance, which really cannot wait much longer. But I highly recommend that we move in that direction, if at all possible. Thank you.
Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. The question I posed last time was to allow the opportunity for you to bring forth what actions, what your needs are. Instead of being nebulous and we need our help, to come out with something more specific is what I was looking for, and that's what you provided tonight as an action plan for us. And I thank you for stepping up and making that available to us to consider and move forward. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Very good. Let's go on to our consent calendar. Does anybody have items to pull?
It seemed very straightforward to me, Mr. Mayor. When I had a conference for the meeting, my questions were all answered. I noticed that we have one to be amended, item 7E. It's changed from...
I believe that was the duplicate item was, no?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, it said 720,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, Mayor, it's a reduction of the price.
Reduction, a reduction of the price.
So, I would move the consent calendar with the amended 7E.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear with Mr. McNamee, I think you had one matter on C that you wanted to recuse yourself on.
I have to disappear.
Just, what I would recommend is that we move the balance of the calendar, other than C. We pull C for you to vote after Mr. McNamee recuses himself.
I amend my motion not to include the C.
Very good. We do not have a speaker on the consent items, so. Very good. Madam Clerk, we have a motion.
Councilmember Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. And we do have item C here. Councilmember McNamee. Item C is concerned with some paving activity, and Councilmember McNamee lives within that area, so he needs to recuse himself for this part of the vote, so.
I'll move item C.
Very good. Councilman, uh, City, Madam Clerk.
You're the mayor.
Councilmember Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee is recused. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0. I mean, I apologize, 4-0 with Councilmember McNamee recusing.
If someone could please go out and let Councilmember McNamee know that we are through that. He's coming back, very good. We do have some department reports tonight that we need to go over. First, department report has to do with our upcoming elections. We have Laura McNamey Maguire, Deputy City Clerk, to do our presentation on the upcoming elections and needed resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening, good evening, council members. The city's general municipal election will be held on November 8th, 2022, where three council members will be elected to four-year terms. Staff has prepared three required resolutions. First, a resolution calling the election to elect those three council members. This resolution includes the city's policy to resolve a tie vote by lot, which was the direction provided by the city council on June 5th, 2018, and reaffirmed on June 9th, 2020, due to the high costs associated with special elections. Second, a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to consolidate the city's election with the statewide gubernatorial general election. That also includes a contract and payment. And finally, a resolution adopting candidate statement guidelines and costs. As in past years, the League of Women Voters may request approval to hold a televised city council candidate forum, which of course is contingent on the Ventura County Public Health Orders and our theater availability. Fundraising began for the election on May 8th. Candidates are required to submit a Form 501 prior to receiving or expending any funds. Contribution limits are $580 per person or committee, per the city's adopted campaign contribution limit, which was last updated in October of 2021. The candidate nomination period begins this year on July 18th and concludes on August 12th. If an incumbent decides not to run, the deadline will be extended an additional five days or until August 17th. Election information is available on the city's website, where information related to voter registration, vote center locations, ballot drop-off locations, and campaign disclosures filed by candidates can be found. The California Voters' Choice Act modernizes elections in California by allowing counties to conduct elections under a model which provides greater flexibility and convenience for the voters. This new model allows voters to choose how, when, and where to cast their ballot by making every voter, excuse me, mailing every voter a ballot, expanding in-person early voting, and allowing voters to cast a ballot at any vote center in Ventura County. Vote-by-mail ballots will be mailed on October 10th this year. Ballot drop-off boxes will be available from October 11th through Election Day, November 8th. And vote centers will be available from October 29th through November 7th for eight hours a day, and on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Voters may also choose to vote in-person at any vote center in Ventura County. So, tonight, staff's recommendation is that city council adopt recommendations 1 through 5, as listed in the staff report and seen in this presentation. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Maguire, thank you for that presentation. Question for you, the $1,400, how is that derived? And do the candidates potentially have to pay more at the end of the election cycle, or do they sometimes get a refund? Tell me a little more about it.
Thank you, Councilmember McNamee. Yes, that is an estimate created by the Ventura County Elections Division. I believe they, they survey what their printing costs are going to be, and they estimate the number of candidates based on historical data, and that's how they come up with the money. And it is just a deposit, you are correct. If the cost goes over $1,400, the candidates will be expected to pay additionally, and that's usually done in December, the county will give us the bill. And conversely, if the cost is less, candidates will be refunded. And just in my experience, in the past few elections, there's always a refund.
Now, is this question, is this a candidate statement, you pay $1,400, or just to be listed on the ballot is $1,400?
No, there is no filing fee to be listed on the ballot. There would just be to have a candidate statement included in the voter information guide.
Excellent, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to move the recommended action with just a brief remark. I've been teaching American government for many, many years to students ranging from like 13-years-old to senior citizens, and I've always had a problem getting people to register to vote, particularly the youth. It seems to be the older you are, the more likely you are to vote, so young folks have a little problem. I'd like to complement this act here in California to make it easier to get the ballot. I mention it because there are states in this country, if you can believe it, that are adopting and have adopted ordinances that make it harder to vote by closing down voting places, by shortening the hours, by removing drop boxes. And that's just antithetical to everything I've ever tried to do in my entire career. In other words, I've been trying to get people to the polls, and they're trying to make it harder in some places. So, I would just, didn't mean to make a speech, but I would like to compliment the state of California for making it easier to vote, because voting is the foundation of our country. If you interfere with voting, people don't realize that you're tampering with our very American political system. If you can't rely on the vote, then nothing works. People have to recognize that people go by the rules, they have the qualifications, they, they run their elections honestly, their campaigns, I mean, fairly, and, and the people that win, win, and the people that lose should not complain. They ought to compliment the people who win, just like in, when we played high school basketball or football or something. And I, I believe Thousand, or, well, Thousand Oaks is part of California. So, California and Thousand Oaks are on the right track with this. So, I salute this, what we're going to do right now. Thank you.
No other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We have a second talk tonight by our own Dr. Helen Cox, having to do with the water shortage declaration. I will turn this over to Dr. Cox.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and members of the council. I'm here this evening to present proposed actions related to the current water shortage conditions. Also with me this evening and available to answer your questions are Senior Analyst John Brooks, Public Works Director Cliff Finley, and Assistant City Attorney Tracy Friedel. Let's start by talking about our water supply. It begins with the Northern Sierra Snowpack. As that bank of stored water slowly melts, it flows into Lake Oroville, the state's second-largest reservoir, and then into the Bay Delta. From there, it's pumped to supply the cities of Southern California. The city is entirely dependent on water from this system, known as the State Water Project. Water is delivered to us by Metropolitan and Callejas Water Districts into the local infrastructure of the city's three purveyors, the city of Thousand Oaks, and two investor-owned utilities, California American Water Company and California Water Service. As we heard last month from Dan Drogen, Manager of Resources at Callejas, the state has suffered its driest period on record and the driest first three months of the year. This is the worst drought in our history since we began receiving water through the State Water Project in 1972. The Northern Sierra Snowpack that we rely on has been well below average for most of the past 10 years. This is a direct result of climate change. This year, our region received the lowest-ever allocation of water from the State Water As a result of the drought, there are insufficient supplies to meet the normal demands of the Metropolitan and Callejas service areas this year. Emergency action was taken by Metropolitan last month, first to secure emergency supplies to meet health and safety needs, and then to adopt an emergency conservation program. Callejas followed suit and adopted the same restrictions on water use. As discussed in the staff report, there are two paths to compliance. One is to meet a volumetric limit that is less than half of the city's current use, and the other is through mandating a limit on outdoor watering to one day a week. Our proposal is to adopt the limit on outdoor watering. The city faces significant costs if it fails to comply with these restrictions. Based on available supplies, the city received a water allocation from Callejas, which represents a more than 50% reduction over normal water use. If the region as a whole does not meet this use reduction, there's a likelihood that all outdoor watering will be banned later this year in order to preserve enough, enough supply to meet health and safety needs. In November last year, council adopted a water shortage contingency plan, defining measures to be taken at six different water shortage levels in the event of a water shortage emergency, just like the one we are now facing. The measures included at each level were based on a quantitative analysis of the expected savings generated by each, so that in aggregate, those measures would achieve the target reductions. We recommend moving to a Level 4 water shortage now in an effort to meet the conservation goal laid out while preserving the ability to water our trees and urban forest throughout this year. Even though higher levels could achieve greater savings, they would all but eliminate outdoor watering. The Level 4 measures include those listed here. A limit of one-day outdoor watering per week, consistent with the Callejas mandate. Consistent with other local purveyors, we propose to designate that day as Saturday for odd street addresses and Sunday for even addresses. Only low-volume or low-flow irrigation systems should be used, and there's no time limit when using these within the allowed watering day. An additional day of watering is permitted for certain categories of use, as can be found in the ordinance and resolution. These include active recreation areas in public parks, schools, daycare, and golf courses. Climate-appropriate trees are expected to survive on one-day watering a week under normal circumstances, but hand-watering of trees and shrubs on additional days is permitted, if necessary, to keep them alive. Here are listed the additional restrictions on water use under our Level 4 plan. They include covering pools, a ban on emptying and refilling pools and spas, no use of water for ornamental water features, and no vehicle washing except at commercial facilities where water recycling is in place. There are some allowances for fuel mod zones and engineered slopes. We refer people to the resolution for those details. Understanding that not everyone will have low-flow irrigation systems in place on day one, we propose a 60-day grace period to allow people to transition traditional sprinklers to low-volume systems. This graphic illustrates how our water is used now. Dividing up the agency's total water use by the number of residents it serves yields an average of 175 gallons per person per day. Of that use, approximately 55 gallons are used indoors and 120 gallons outdoors. We strongly encourage residents to adopt any and all water savings measures, including the use of water-efficient showerheads, faucets, and appliances. But the most savings residents can realize is through reducing outdoor irrigation. The most effective action to take is to stop watering turf immediately. This is the quickest and easiest way to achieve significant water savings. In any case, most turf will not survive summer on one day of watering per week. Currently, a two-person household uses approximately eight units or eight HCF, that is 100 cubic feet, per month. The use target for that two-person household is six units or six HCF per month. Similarly, a four-person household currently uses about 22 units per month. The new target for that four-person household is 12 units or 12 HCF per month. We're asking all families to stay within Tier 1 water use. That would amount to water use up to 12 HCF per month. Looking at current usage, half our households, the 50% marked in blue there at the bottom, already stay within Tier 1 and use 21% of our water. Marked there in green, 41% are within Tier 2, and they account for approximately 54% of our water use. And in red, the top 9% of users account for 25% of the city agency's current water use. If we can bring the top 10% of water users into line with the lower half, we'll be a long way towards meeting our goal. We've been meeting regularly and frequently with the other water purveyors serving the city. Our goal has been to align water restrictions between the three agencies. Watering throughout the city will be limited to the same days and times, with one slight difference for non-residential watering within the Cal-Am area. The other agencies are still finalizing their restrictions, and may be minor differences in the type of sprinkler systems they allow. in the type of sprinkler systems they allow. These are the steps we recommend for residents, starting now. Irrigation timers should be reprogrammed to the correct day of the week, and a plan made for re-landscaping turf areas. We recommend them to cease watering turf, and property owners should work towards transitioning to low-volume irrigation for garden beds and trees. Turf rebates are available at the website bewaterwise.com. Although it's important to apply now, turf replacement landscaping does not need to be installed until the drought's over. The city allows six months after the drought for re-landscaping. The city is actively working on communicating information to its residents and businesses, with a plan to mail letters to all in the next week. We've developed a dedicated website at teoakswater.org for the community, where information and resources will be shared. Also, our sustainability website at teoaks.org/go-green, links to many resources, including gray water and landscaping information and tips. Our goal is firstly to raise awareness throughout our community through the outreach and communications methods outlined. Violators will receive warnings initially. After the initial period, future violations will result in a warning letter, with subsequent ones subject to escalating fines, as shown here. If the owner fails to be compliant after four violations, a flow restrictor will be installed to limit the water flow at their property. The city is doing its part to cut water use. We've drained the fountain at the Civic Arts Plaza and turned off turf sprinklers at City Hall and other non-functional turf areas. We're actively working to convert irrigation to low-volume systems and on all non-turf As mentioned by Mr. Drogen in his presentation to council last month, Calhega's is establishing a drought response task force, and we'd like to invite council to appoint a member to participate in that task force. That ends my report. Thank you. We're available to answer questions, and we also have representatives from Cal-Am and Cal-Water water agencies available online to answer your questions. Thank you.
I've been speaking with the people to my right more tonight, but I'm going to turn this time and talk to our councilmember McNamie.
Mayor, thank you. We were feeling very neglected on this side of the aisle. Helen, thank you for a wonderful presentation. Thank you. I'd like to clarify a few things. The water drought situation we're in, in December of 2021, we had record snowfall of 125% snowpack, if my memory serves me correct. What happened that we were only down to 5% snowpack in February? What occurred to cause such a reduction?
So our snowpack peaked much earlier than usual, I think two or three months earlier than usual, so that by April, the snowpack was only 25% of what it would normally be at that time, which is the normal peak. So we had no additional, or very little additional precipitation in the first three months of this year, so no added snow to that snowpack. And because of warmer temperatures, we had early runoff from the snowpack. And so what remains, which is the runoff that supplies our water from the rest of the year, is much lower than normal.
So we're rather dependent on snowpack here in our city and Southern California area. I want to hearken back to something on a higher level in Sacramento. The mission has been, under the Governor Brown administration, that the steelhead trout and the delta smelt have the ability to spawn further upstream. And two tunnels were approved, but we went through the environmental impact report, which was completed recently. And in that time, though, millions of gallons of quality water per day are being shipped out to and funneled out to the San Francisco Bay, instead of the farmers in Central California and further south to us to use water. To compound the problem, Governor Newsom comes on board and doesn't want two tunnels. He wants one tunnel. The EIR, Environmental Impact Report, starts all over again, with millions of gallons a day flowing out to the San Francisco Bay, which normally would be coming south to us. Explain that logic to me. I don't get it. Why are we so concerned about delta smelt and steelhead trout spawning abilities when we're struggling for water here in Southern California? Why is that water not being diverted south to the farmers and to us here in Thousand Oaks while they're working through the EIR report? Please explain this to me.
My understanding is that a lot of the water that's being held in the Delta, in the Bay Delta area, is required to stop sea-level intrusion into that area. And so if one redirects that water directly south, then what's happening is that because of sea-level rise, the Bay Delta is becoming increasingly saline, and that is causing the destruction of the crops and the danger of contaminating the entire water supply. So it's important to keep flow in the Bay Delta to resist the intrusion of seawater. When it comes to the twin tunnels, I know that the original proposal was for twin tunnels, and in fact, that's what Metropolitan had gone forth with a proposal for the twin tunnels two or three years ago, or even further back than that. The move to the single tunnel, I believe, was because of funding. So Metropolitan and others were trying to raise the funding to support the construction of twin tunnels, and all the agencies were not on board, including a lot of the farming community was not on board to support funding or contribute towards the twin tunnels. So in the end, only one tunnel was approved for moving forward, and that would be funded by Metropolitan and other agencies, which are bringing the water down to Southern California.
As we're moving towards, and this will be my third question, Mayor. The idea of doing conservation is a reactive-type approach, and can't be sustained if we don't have water. Proactive approach that I'm advocating and working with our project works director, Mr. Finley, is to take the 10 million gallons we have coming out of our wastewater plant at Hill Canyon, and hold to our commitment to the farmers that we have an agreement until 2050, to give them what they need. But instead of letting it flow out into nature to flow to the farmers, that we pipe it over to them. And then take the remainder of that 10 million and send it back up to Calhega's or over to Camarillo for their reverse osmosis plant that's coming up on board in June. There's a lot of options and choices here with more efficient use of the water we do have. And the second one that needs to be explored is stormwater capture and reuse, because we will get rain at some point. And the majority of the water that hits Thousand Oaks flows out past the Hill Canyon plant, and we're losing opportunity there to capture that, instead of letting it flow out into the ocean eventually. Would you please comment on any other options, or even those options, either for you, Dr. Cox, or Mr. Finley?
So actually, what you're talking about is generating or finding local supplies to enhance our overall water supply picture. We are looking at, working with actually Calhega's, Las Vergenes, Camarosa, all of the water purveyors here in the Canejo Valley, and beyond, actually, to establish the best, most cost-effective ways to take advantage of our local water. We don't have a lot here in the Canejo Valley, but what we do have, we're trying to go ahead and work with the other agencies to get that treated and get it into our potable water systems. We're doing a stormwater capture demonstration project over in the Malibu Creek watershed right now. That water will be hopefully going down to the Las Vergenes plant and coming back again as recycled, and then ultimately potable water. So there's a lot of work being done right now on a regional level to find solutions, find additional sources of water. And we continue to appreciate council support on those. There's a lot will be coming your way in the coming months and years.
On the answer to the question of regionals, which would be very, very nice to see, is that Simi Valley, for example, and Thousand Oaks can work cooperatively with Calhega's to put a reverse osmosis plant at Calhega's. And we simply take our water from Simi and Thousand Oaks and pump it up there to be put back into Lake Bard for reuse. So I look forward to continuing working with you on these answers. There are answers there, we just have to find them and find out what's the best solution. So I look forward to working with you in the future. Mayor?
Thank you. I hope we continue on that regional approach to this problem. Obviously, none of us as individual cities can go ahead with it, but if we work as a group in this area, we can maybe take a dent out of our reliance on the State Water Project. I saw Councilmember Jones's hand up. Did you have a comment, sir?
I don't remember that, but since you've called on me. I just wonder, Cliff, do we know about the watershed or Ventura County? At one time, they were proposing a Sespe Dam up above Fillmore. Do you know if that was ever reconsidered, or is there enough water flow there to justify such a dam? Or do you have any knowledge about the Ventura County watershed that might help us capture rainwater?
I'm not sure the status of that particular project. I will say that there hasn't been any new dams in the state recently, and I think to build a dam in the Sespe wilderness would be very, very challenging. But I know these are challenging times, and the county and the region is looking at every option, but I don't have any specific details about that.
If anybody tells you anything about that, would you pass it on? I'd appreciate it. I know they had it on the ballot once, and it was defeated, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's very good. Maybe it's time to revisit some surface storage. Let's see, Councilmember Bill De La Peña, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I have a couple of questions. One was, is in reference to the supplemental packet, where we have two letters. I wanted to clarify, the letter says Cal-Am Water and Cal-Water are following the city's lead in order to have consistency among all water users in the city. Is that factual?
Well, we have been meeting and talking to them regularly. I believe they haven't yet final their regulations. I mean, ideally, they would have the same regulations. I believe that they have some limitations, because they're regulated by the California Public Utilities Committee, and so their authorization to pass certain limitations may be a little bit different from ours. Broadly speaking, the city's ordinance would apply to the city as a whole, but generally, we only enforce that ordinance in our own agency, and Cal-Am and Cal-Water would enforce their own restrictions in their service region. We do have the representatives from those two agencies online, if they may be more directly available to answer your question.
Thank you for clarifying that, but the city is following the MWD's lead?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And those two agencies also will limit watering to one day a week. So as far as following the Calhega's and MWD requirements, they will be doing that. There may be some slight nuanced differences in exactly how that's carried out, but all three agencies will be limiting watering to one day a week, and in fact, we're limiting it to the same days and the same times.
And this particular writer is concerned about a 60-day grace period for transitioning to low flow, which means low volume, low pressure, fearing there could be a run on all of these things. Everybody trying to buy the same items, they will be running out of these items, and I guess, is there a possibility that the grace period could be extended?
Certainly, that's a possibility. We started with a 60-day period, with the rationale that Calhega's will be evaluating water use again in August, and at that point, that will give us two months to see where we stand and how far our measures have taken us, you know, the gains that we've made. Certainly, if we get towards the end of July, and we do hear from our residents, and we do find out that, you know, there are limited supplies of what's required, then we would bring that item to council, or given the summer recess, we would probably request an advance authorization, that the city manager have that permission, should such a situation evolve.
And then my third question is what everybody has been asking me in the community. If we have no water, how come we're scheduled to build hundreds if not thousands of units?
Well, the state has priorities for that item also, and the state has placed a priority on building housing over that for outdoor watering, for nonessential watering. The good news is that new development will use a lot less water than the traditional development in the city. In fact, we've seen some of the estimates for expected water use for new developments, and it's less than half of what the current average residential use is, and very much in line with what the mandates, this limit of 80 gallons per capita per day is that's being placed on us. So we expect new developments to be very close to that, and so their impact on water use will be very minimal compared to the existing single-family developments.
Yet we are looking at possibly extending this conservation period to maybe no watering at all, and so it's good to hear you say that the state puts priority on the housing units rather than the water. That, I think, is quite the message. Thank you.
Councilmember Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, drought or not, people still need a place to live. And no one's suggesting that we continue with suburban sprawl out into the open space with big lots and big homes. You know, we're talking about apartment complexes that will use, I'm sure, probably less than the, what is the Tier 1, Dr. Cox? 8, 1 HCF or something?
Up to 1,300 cubic feet.
I think an apartment unit will use way less than that. But at any rate, I was going to ask Cliff, you know, the staff has had a lot of foresight when it comes to waters, additional water sources. I mean, we've talked for some time now about tapping into the groundwater, which we are doing, especially over the golf course, and we thought at first we had to build a plant to purify it, but now with this regional approach, we're going to run it through Las Vergenes District and then pump it back to the city, correct? And then, based on the priorities that we talked about last week, this is a priority, and we're going to try to expedite this process, correct?
Yes, that is correct. We're, again, looking for the most cost-effective way-
Right.
-to get that groundwater treated to potable water standards, so that it can be a good local supply. The plant that Las Vergenes is building is bigger than the one we would be building-
Yes.
-and so you get the economies of scale with that shared resource.
Good regional approach, cost-effective, and it could supply close to 10% of our water needs. So I'm glad to hear that's on the fast track. And then, Dr. Cox, you mentioned, if I heard you right, that when we go down to one day watering a week, those with the drip system, there's no limit of time on how much they can run that on that one day? Did I hear you right on that?
That's correct. It doesn't have the same 15-minute limit per station that the traditional sprinkler systems would have.
Good. And, you know, I applaud the staff for coming up with the 60-day transition. You know, the sprinklers and the sprays, they just got to go, but all homeowners need a little bit of time to make that transition, you know? It's, there's time involved, there's cost involved, but I think most people are willing to do it, but that 60-day grace period, I think, is going to really help, so.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
Yeah, just based on those comments from Councilmember Adam, it reminded me of something and just on- something and just on the, everybody's seen our front lawn, you saw it in the pictures there, and, you know, that is probably the most illustrative example of, of what, how quickly that turned when those, when those sprinklers turned off there. That, just to give the council and the community a sense of scale on that, that's roughly speaking, we estimate around 200 units a month in savings, 200. So you do that estimate of the average household in the internal component in that tier one. You think about, that's what we were spent just on the front lawn, out front. You can kind of look around town and you think about those examples and it's just, you know, it's, you know, it's impactful when you see it, but when you start to add those numbers, 200, 200, 200, and start to see what, what that takes.
Very good. I have just a couple of quick questions and I'll turn it back over to Councilmember McNamee. The, I applaud the staff for coming up with a 60-day grace period. That was one of my biggest concerns when we first heard about this a month or so ago, that it came on very suddenly. I think we all could see it coming, but the directive to cut our water use by such a drastic amount within, at that time, it was five weeks of preparation, seemed insurmountable. So coming up with a 60-day grace period allows folks to really get out there and start conserving. What happens though in August if it looks like we haven't achieved these large cuts?
Well, we expect to get the feedback from Cuyagus. I mean, it's important that we're going to be working really hard to make sure that the watering restrictions are enforced in terms of the watering days and the time that people can water, because we do need to show good progress towards those. If there isn't good progress, you know, the city is at risk of the fines that are being, that could potentially be enacted by Cuyagus, which are very sizable. So we want to ensure that we are in compliance, that we do enforce the regulations.
Very good. And if, if we, my understanding is that it's not the city that is making this happen, it's really our supplier. It's similar to when, gosh, when we all found out there was restrictions on all sorts of things when COVID first hit. We are being restricted by our supplier, is that correct?
That's correct. And in fact, those, the limitations are being actually handed down from the California Department of Water Resources because they are the operator of the state water project. And in order for Metropolitan to be provided with the supplies that they are then passing on to us, those restrictions are put in place by the state. I don't know if maybe Mr. Finley had something to add.
I, I just wanted to make sure we're clear. The 60 days is the time we're giving everybody to comply with the low-flow irrigation, not the one day a week. One day a week starts immediately.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Low-flow only.
Thank you for the clarification. We, we want everybody to start conserving as much as possible, but that conversion to a low flow is 60 days. Gotcha. Thank you. A couple of just small, small ones, I actually have to go to four if that's okay with the, it's, you mentioned permitted watering. Is that, can you explain what permitted watering is? That you, that you could go one day a week and there's also permitted watering that you had mentioned on your slide?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. There are certain categories of use that are allowed one additional day of watering. They're mentioned in the, or they're, they're spelled out in the, in the resolution itself. They include the active playing fields from parks and schools. It also includes fuel mod zones where, where that's a permit condition, that, that there's live vegetation, and also for engineered slopes to keep vegetation alive on engineered slopes so that we don't suffer soil erosion problem.
So that the functional turf at, at parks and at schools would be permitted one extra day a week?
That's correct. And in fact, there was a, an announcement by the state just this afternoon, I believe, that the state itself is banning irrigation on all non-functional turf at commercial, institutional, and, and businesses. So the state has taken that action, that only functional turf in public areas will be allowed to be watered.
And I noticed also in your slides that you said that artificial turf was not recommended or was not available for the rebate, a $3 a square foot rebate. Can you explain that for me?
Yes, artificial turf is not a very sustainable alternative for a variety of reasons. One is that it gets very hot in summer, in fact, so hot that you and possibly even your pets can't walk on it. So in general, people have to water their artificial turf to keep it usable. So that's, that's a major reason, reason it also contributes to the urban heat island effect because of that. There are various other problems. If you wanted to use it as a doggy area, you would also have to water it down to clear it off to ensure that it didn't get rather odorous over time. And also then, the art, artificial turf can be quite expensive and lasts probably about 10 years, after which time it has to be disposed of. And in and of itself, that's a big contributor to, to landfill. So we wouldn't recommend that as a very sustainable alternative. Mr. Finley has something to add.
Mr. Finley, go right ahead.
I just also wanted to add to that list that the state, non-functional turf, they specifically called out HOAs. So again, it's non-functional turf, businesses and even HOAs, so.
HOAs, commercials, all that.
Commercial, all that, yeah. So if you, if you look around, as Drew said, you look around at all the turf that's here, there and everywhere, that's non-functional, there's a lot of it in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you. Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, Mayor. I too have received questions from our residents saying, why are we putting in additional housing when we don't have adequate water for what we currently have? And I'd say it's similar to the following, is that if you have a ship that is sinking because it has holes in the, in the hull, even if you put smaller holes in the hull, it's still sinking and sinking even more so. So I think this is maybe a challenge we as a council need to look at. And that same analogy that, yes, we've got a lot of holes in the hull, but why put in some more holes, holes in this hull if we don't have to? I'd like to also make an observation that in the last 50 years, the population in the state of California has doubled, and yet we have not built in 50 years any holding capacity for water as in the form of reservoirs. It's analogous to if you had a large pool and we have more straws going into that pool today than we did years ago. What do we have in Sacramento to address this? On a local level, we can do stormwater capture and reuse. What is Sacramento doing to do, increase California's water holding capacity by increasing reservoirs?
Is that a question for me?
It's a question for anyone who feels brave enough to answer that one.
Go ahead, Mr. Finley.
I, I just wanted to, just wanted to say that another thing we're doing on the local level is where, where we've been not successful at building very many reservoirs lately above ground, they are looking at opportunities to take advantage of aquifer storage. Actually, I visited a site out in, outside of Palmdale last week that is exactly that. They have, it's an, it's essentially an underground reservoir. But again, how we get the water down here without our, without those tunnels, it's, you know, it's a multifaceted solution. So we need, we need lots of help from Sacramento.
What's going on with Woodland Hills, for example, where people that live there tell me they're allowed to water two days a week and we can only water one day a week here? Why are they special and we're not?
So there are some differences in the different areas that, where they receive their water supply. So some regions receive some of their water from the state project and then have other supplemental water supplies, whether that's local or whether that's imported from elsewhere. So it's up to each of those areas to determine how they're going to meet the regulations. And if they have supplemental water supplies, they can use those to add additional watering days, which is what's happened within the city of LA. They believe they can meet the watering restriction requirements with their own supplemental groundwater supplies.
Thank you. Last question, my third mayor. Many have suggested we move to desalinization. We have the Pacific Ocean off the coast here. Do decel, pump it into Thousand Oaks or other cities that are water short? Is this a viable model to look at and to utilize? Or is there challenges with that type of model?
Well, Cuyagus did a, a study on that a few years ago and they've published that study. I think there's a link to it on our T-Ox Water page. In essence, desalinization is feasible. It's expensive. The Cuyagus estimated that it would cost more than twice as much per unit of water. And so the first question is, are people willing to pay that much for their water? And the other question is, you know, there are various challenges with siting those desalinization plants, as was demonstrated recently in Huntington Beach. So between the siting and the cost, there, there are none in the plans for our region right at the moment, as far as I'm aware.
What do you mean by siting? Huntington Beach, what, what are you referring to there?
Locating, location of a plant. I mean, it's, it's a very extensive environmental process, Coastal Commission as well as, you know, everybody else. It, it is on the list, you know, it's a list of possibilities. Obviously, we want to exhaust all less expensive and maybe reuse opportunities that we have. That's why there's more of a focus on, Simi Valley has a significant amount of very salty water. So that's actually less salty than the ocean, so that's where the, the cost comes in. So it's, it's on the list. There's lots of, lots of projects on the list. They're all expensive and they all will take regional cooperation, which is what we're focusing on.
And moving water, you have the plant, let's say by the Pacific Ocean. Is it correct that it's about a million dollars a mile to put down a pipe to bring the water from the ocean over to us?
At least.
So that's part of the cost prohibitiveness at this point?
Yeah, and, and it's very energy intensive. And, you know, Santa Barbara in the late 80s built their decel plant and they used it for a few years and as soon as they found a less expensive water, they mothballed it for 20 years, 25 years. And I think they've recently dusted it off and are trying to get it going again. But it was a tremendous capital expense that, that had to be paid for by the rate pair, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I think a lot of these ideas are great ideas, a regional approach with all these different ideas, but I don't know how long it would take us to get a dam built. And so we're, I guess, we're not going to get one in the next two months for sure. So I think what the topic before us tonight really is this conservation effort that we're going to be looking at. All these ideas are, are great for long-term addressing the, the lack of water that we've seen over the last 20, 25 years. We do have a bunch of people on, both in person here and also on Zoom, who would like to speak to this question. So if we have no other further, we have one further question from Councilmember Claudia De La Penya.
Thank you. The question I have is, speaking of regional partnerships, what is the cost for Thousand Oaks to become a partner with Las Vergenes Water District and their plan?
Actually, at this point, we are in the next several meetings bringing in an MOU forward. It's not going to cost us anything. Ultimately, we are, we are looking to be partners in getting grants. Regional projects are, are much more attractive for grants. And at, at the time that their plant gets built, what essentially we would do is pay the cost that is, costs them to treat it, to treat our water, so.
And the number that was mentioned to me when I took a tour last year was, was it running around 40 million?
Ooh, total cost, I'm not sure the total cost, but the cost we're estimating per acre foot of water they produce might be around $1,600 an acre foot, which is only about a hundred dollars more than we're paying for state water right now.
Okay.
So naturally what we're, we're looking at from, you know, it's a, it's a unit cost. How does it compare to our other sources?
We're not participating in the actual construction of the infrastructure?
Not, not at this point in time?
Not at this point, okay. Because I thought that that was what they wanted us to do when I spoke to them.
They, we, we're, we're just studying and starting to have these discussions. It's exciting, but it's still early.
All right, thank you.
Claudia, they were very, when, when we met with them in DC this year, they were very excited to have that possibility of us joining them simply with our water, because I understand they do need water for their system to work as they wish, wish it to.
How much does a decel plant cost typically?
So the cost per acre foot to produce a decel, 3,300?
I think it was just, yeah, something around the mid 3,000.
3,300 dollars an acre foot. So if I can get it for 16, that's why we would start.
Okay. But how much does it cost to build the plant?
Well, it depends on how big it is. But it might 60, 60, 60 to 100 million.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, 60 to 100 million. Okay. And what would, how much would it cost to, as that water flows out of Hill Canyon, to capture it somehow and build this piping system to bring it back? What's that, what's that?
So, so it's, it's, it's really important currently, well, as we all know, water is most efficient when it flows downhill.
Downhill, yes.
And right now, all of our effluent from Hill Canyon, nearly all of our effluent from Hill Canyon is actually being diverted downstream and being used by, for, for the farming on the Oxnard Plain.
Yes.
And the Camarosa Water District.
And we get paid for that.
And we get paid for that.
Million bucks.
A million dollars a year, a little less than that, but. And, and what's important about that is that's water that they use and, and use for farming that then makes state water available for us.
Oh, there you go.
So it's not a bad thing.
To change that and somehow capture that water and pump it back into the city, you're talking.
Would be extremely expensive because Hill Canyon is, is very much lower than the city of Thousand Oaks. We're up here on the plateau and it's way down in the valley.
You could be talking millions upon millions of dollars, correct?
Councilmember Adam, the analysis I did two years ago came out, just to pipe it up, was about 45 million. And the decel plant or the reverse osmosis was about 30, 35 million is what we were coming up with, with Nodder's analysis, coming up at about 75, 80 million dollars for the total package of the piping with the decel plant. So if that gives you some hard numbers, but that was again, three years ago before where we are right now.
Yeah, I was just curious.
That's why I think, I think we got to get to our, our speakers, but that's why I think this regional approach is the best way to go.
Well, sometimes it's good to ground yourself in some realities about the cost of these things, that's all. I mean, I know Cam Rio just finished their decel plant and I think it was a pretty hefty price tag.
Well, it's the pumping.
It's, it's.
Saltwater exists in the sea and the sea is at sea level. Therefore, if you're higher than sea level, you have to pay, pump it up. We're about 900 feet, I think.
No, that's, it's, all these, all these solutions, again, are long-term solutions. For us to do a pipeline from Hill Canyon even up to Bard Lake is what, six miles? That's a lot of pipe. So we're, these are long-term solutions that I'm fully on board with if we want to go and do that. But right now, what we have is an immediate issue that we're not going to get half the water that we were told we were going to get. So with that.
Well, just before we move to public speakers, just going to build on that point to remind
to remind, as I said at goal setting this week, one thing that is, that is good that comes out of crisis situations is it forces innovation and innovative thinking and approaches. And so, this is going to be a time in which regional collaboration, that agencies that might not have contemplated that before, are going to look to get on board, to steady out the stream for the long term. And I, I think there could be some real positives to come out of that.
And I think with this action tonight, I think we are looking at approving, sending one of our own members to be part of this solution, is that correct? Very good. Okay, let's get to our speakers while we have a second of peace here up on the dais.
What does that mean?
First up, we have Clint Foltz online. Clint, you're on.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz. I'm from Thousand Oaks, and I'm a member of the Canoe Climate Coalition. We at the Canoe Climate Coalition would like to see the city adopt the resolution declaring a Level Four water supply shortage. We applaud the efforts of the city to help reduce water usage during this unprecedented drought. According to a recent study published in the scientific journal Nature titled "Rapid Intensification of Emerging Southwestern North American Megadrought in 2020 to 2021", the ongoing drought appears to be the worst in 1,200 years. This current megadrought stands out in the record as the worst or driest in more than a millennium, exceeding those that occurred in the year 800 and another in the 1,500s. Park Williams, a climate scientist at UCLA and the study's lead author, said this, quote, "Without climate change, this would not be even close to as bad as one of those historical megadroughts," end quote. The double whammy of searing heat and persistent drought in recent years reflects the steady increase in global temperatures brought on by the burning of fossil fuels. The authors attribute 19% of the severe 2021 drought and 42% of the extended drought to human-caused climate change. The city of Thousand Oaks can make a difference by rapidly advancing and approving a climate action plan that addresses heat-trapping greenhouse gases. We at the Canoe Climate Coalition are thankful that council members added climate to the city's top 10 goals for 2022 to 2023. Now is the time for the city to be an environmental leader on topics such as climate change adaptation, water conservation, and greenhouse gas production. We are in a climate emergency and a water emergency, and there's a lot of room for drought conditions to get worse. We need to be prepared for a much drier future. To stop aridification in the Canoe Valley, we must wean ourselves from fossil fuels and address the accelerating drought conditions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. We also have, I believe, Mike Smith in the house. Come on down, Mike. Next up is Paul Chilopoulous. Good evening, sir.
I'm Mike Smith. I reside in Simi Valley, but I'm a local pool builder here. 30 to 40% of my business is in TO. Drought's nobody's fault, but what is at fault is Sacramento. I've been doing this for 33 years, and we start talking about planning, and then when it rains, it goes away. So, I would employ everybody and anybody at Sacramento. When we do get rain, don't be fooled, we live in a desert. We have codes, seismic codes, up the gazu, because we know we're going to have an earthquake. We don't know when, but we're going to have it. I don't know if this is a newsflash to Sacramento, we live in a desert. We know we're going to have droughts. How they have not planned for this is really appalling, and puts us all in this position. That being said, swimming pools do not waste water. Our industry people can give you stacks and stacks and stacks. We do, in fact, build retention basins. They become, a swimming pool becomes more than what people think is a luxury item. They also become emergency drinking water when there's the earthquake, if your water's maintained properly, or at least you can bathe, flush toilets, boil the water. Also, when everything does dry out, we're going to have fires. That's an emergency firefighting apparatus also. So, there's a lot of things that swimming pools are that they don't get credit for. They're not the water wasters. It is the ornamental landscaping. And like we told Simi Valley, or I told Simi Valley, I would love to see a city take a sampling of maybe 20 homes and do a pressure test on all 20 homes. I guarantee you 80% of them fail. There's underslab leaks, there's so much water waste that we're all here because our industry is just kind of taking it in the chops, because everybody thinks, oh, swimming pool's a luxury item. They're not, they're not, I mean, they add property values, they add taxations, they add permitting fees. And someday, if somebody says, you can't have swimming pools in our city, the person who's going to buy a home in that city is now going, nope, I'm going to Simi Valley, or I'm going to Calavah, or wherever they're going to be allowed. So, we just want to kind of throw some of those things out there, so they're not overlooked when we're getting further down the road, which unfortunately probably will. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Paul, and I won't hammer your name again, sorry.
My name is Paul Chilopoulous. I'm with Allstate Pools and Spas, based here in Thousand Oaks, California. And I'm here tonight to address the subject of swimming pool construction, the possible impact on our industry due to the drought we are facing, and the possible discussions by the council impacting our industry. It's worth noting that Senator Brian Dolly from Northern California has a comprehensive explanation on his website as to why we in Southern California and the state as a whole find ourselves in this predicament. Like most issues we are facing, it was avoidable and due to poor leadership in Sacramento and inaction. One fact that stands out is that literally trillions of gallons of water have run into the Pacific Ocean over the last two years. Once again, now the citizens, businesses, and industries are being asked to make a sacrifice when they have no liability. Please take a moment to go to his website to further understand the details about that. In lieu of any restrictions affecting swimming pools, I would suggest that the council instead consider requiring, requiring that new pools be provided with a quality bubble cover, solar cover, which will reduce evaporation and actually reduces the water usage of a pool to less than the footprint of an equal-sized piece of grass. The city of LA and city of Simi Valley has this requirement, and it's quite effective. It's worth noting that about one-third of my clients view a swimming pool not only as recreation, but as a emergency water source in case of a natural disaster and a water supply in case of fire. Pools should be viewed as a mini water storage reservoir. Passing any sort of restrictions will negatively impact residents, businesses within the trade and outside the trade. It will impact city tax revenue, and it will trickle down to all the subs and sub-businesses that we all employ and use. In preparing for this meeting, I found that in 2018, the city of Thousand Oaks published a water master plan. It's 238 pages long, and it makes no mention that I read of evaluating the 230 miles of municipal water supply lines ranging in thickness from three inches to 24 inches and ranging in age from one to 64 years old, most of which are constructed of asbestos cement, as noted on page or section 217. This type of pipe is soft and brittle, more subjective to leaking, and has a limited lifespan of up to 60 years. This means two-thirds of the city's water supply lines are at the end of their life. I propose that the city council consider, consider directing the public works to begin evaluating the condition of all water pipes for leakage as part of the water conservation efforts. I'm confident there are other alternative solutions for the city to meet their water restriction goals besides targeting the water, I should say, the swimming pool industry. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Scott Cohen. Scott, please come down. After that, if you'd like to pre-stage, is Trent Sigard.
Good evening, Mayor Engler and council members. I'm Scott Cohen. I'm vice chair of the California Pool and Spa Association. I'm also president of the Green Scene Landscaping and Pools. We build about 15 pools and landscapes per year here in Thousand Oaks. And I'm joined here today by a dozen of my local pool builders. We're all concerned, because we've heard some rumors about there being restrictions on swimming pool construction and new pools. And I'm here today because I'd like to dispel some of the misconceptions that we have on swimming pools. First off, pools are not water wasters. Swimming pools actually work as rain retention vessels. The first flush of rain, the first four inches of water can be captured in a swimming pool. Compared with lawns, pools save about 12,000 gallons of water in the first year and 30,000 gallons of water each year thereafter. The pool and spa community, the construction industry of pools and spas, is really important to California's economy. We actually have 95,000 jobs that were created in 2020 and $5 billion in revenue. The new pools and spas that were filled in the last year accounted for less than 1% of most municipalities' water use, very little. Thousand Oaks actually lessened water consumption by increasing the quantity of swimming pools that were constructed annually. Here in Thousand Oaks, we built 77 pools in 2019, that's the total permits, 122 in 2020, and 178 pools last year in 2021. Each of those pools reduced about 1,200 square feet of irrigated area. So, you have the swimming pool and the surrounding deck area, and these areas were irrigated before as lawns or landscapes, and they're now decking and pools. A covered pool uses 90% less water than a lawn does. So, we want to encourage people to use these pool covers. I know in all of our pools, every single one, we provide a bubble cover to reduce evaporation. And I think we want to encourage homeowners to use that rather than put any thought of stopping new pool construction. With regards to new pool construction, in a new pool, it takes four to six months to build one. The amount of water you save by not watering it during that time is enough water to fill the pool. So, net zero, right? In addition to pool covers, we do have an ANSI standard that talks about checking pools for leaks regularly and turning off your autofill, so that you're hand-watering to add water to a pool to compensate for any evaporation, so that you're comfortable knowing how much water you're actually using. We'd just like your help to help save the pool industry. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Coming down now is Trent Sigard.
Hello, council. This is my first public comment. Nice to, nice to see you all. My name is Trent Sigard. I was born at Los Robles Hospital here in town. I'm a resident in Newberry Park right now, and to say that I'm a product of the city would be an understatement. Love this water conversation. We all have people to thank tonight, and that's William Mulholland and Fred Eaton, and they brought water to Southern California through the Los Angeles Aqueduct. And we haven't shifted with the times and with the drought to add more water systems since the state water project. Okay, to what I wrote. I'm glad to see the city has been taking water conservation seriously. Thank you for fixing our water tanks that were cracked and advocating for brown lawns. Yours looks great. I've recently taken a hyper-focused interest in how our water travels from where it originates to how it gets to my tap. So, I've spent the last few months going to each of these aqueducts, the state water project, the Los Angeles Aqueduct, and the Colorado River Aqueduct, to try to get a better understanding of how our water truly gets to our tap. In just a few short weeks here, I will be riding my bike along the first of the three, the Los Angeles Aqueduct, that starts near Aberdeen, Aberdeen in the Owens Valley, and I will be finishing at the Los Angeles LADWP headquarters. I'll be following up that with a ride on the state water project during the summer to raise awareness. The purpose of these bike rides is to educate residents about where their water originates, which most people don't know. They don't know where their water comes from, and that's the first step to conservation and getting people educated on why this is super important. And so, I wanted to come here and share that I am going to, I'm a media creator, and I'm making an eight-part YouTube series about my time actualizing this journey that our water takes to get to our taps. And I think this sort of thing needs to be done, right? People need to see someone struggle going the hundreds of miles, it's over 1,200 miles of canals that bring water to us. And we all need to do our part, and education is my greatest point of contribution. And so, I would love to speak with you guys further on how we can educate the public and get citizens to really care. Water conservation's hard to make palatable, and I think through stories and through storytelling is really where people start to listen. And I'd also like to make a little comment. The Los Virginas Reservoir, I believe is a part of the Los Virginas Project, but that was a really great dam site. They actually wanted to make the dam twice as, or half as low, make it go into both wings of the neighborhood, but the developer wanted to make three springs, and that reservoir helped us during the 94 earthquake. So, we have a pretty good resilient water source here. Thank you, and I'll follow up with you guys on email.
Thank you, sir. Online, we have one more speaker. We have John Norwood. John, are you still online there? Yes, I see you. Go ahead, John, I think you're on mute. There you are.
There we go. I think I'm okay now, right?
You're good, we can hear you.
Good. Thank you, council members. My name is John Norwood with the California Pool and Spa Association. I'll be really brief. Just want to let you know that we do support your Level Four using, or encouraging residents to use covers when the pool's not in use. As was indicated, that's going to save about 90, 95% of the evaporation. We also support people not dumping and refilling their pools for chemical reasons or otherwise. There's options to that. You can use reverse osmosis to do that job, so you don't have to empty the pool. Lastly, our association puts out a list of water-saving tips for owners of pools and owners of spas that will help them deal with their own pool and spa and save water, and we'd be happy to make that available to you, so that you can distribute it through a newsletter or otherwise. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you, sir. Is there any response from our staff on some of the public comments?
Yes, I'd like to follow up with the gentleman that talked about the, from the pool building and spa building industry. So, just to confirm that, at the Level Four restrictions, there are no restrictions on new pool construction. And the one change really is on draining and refilling pools. But we also do mandate pool coverage. And so, without a pool being covered, it loses about as much water as watering turf, essentially loses about as much water from evaporation as you would use to water turf. And so, given that we've already identified turf as a big water waster or user, pools can also be, but not if they're covered. So, it's really, really important that people do cover their pools. You can cover it very cheaply with the bubble material that can be cut, custom cut with a pair of scissors to fit the pool exactly. Those are inexpensive. And also, by using such a cover, you can save a lot of money on heating costs, because it will keep the heat in the pool, and therefore, you'll save on energy costs too. So, I think that's the important message to get across, is we do want residents to be covering their pools.
Go ahead, Mr. Finley.
Yeah, I also want to address the maintenance of our, our water system. We actually, we are actually report to the state how much water is unaccounted for. In other words, we buy all of our water from Callejas, and then we meter all the water we sell. So, actually, the city has extremely low unaccounted-for water, less than 3, 3.5%. And, and that water goes for things like flushing, which we actually flush into, out of, when we flush our system, we flush into our water truck. So, we actually reuse that water. But when you're flushing out of a hydrant, you can't use a meter. Firefighting is another thing that is used for that unaccounted-for water. So, really, we, we do, we do quite well at, at that. We also have a, included in our capital budget is ongoing replacement of pipes and leak detection, and we take all of that extremely serious. detection, and we take all of that extremely serious. So we're confident that we are taking care of our infrastructure.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
I was just making sure, no other comments, no other responses? Great. I think, go ahead, Mr. Jones. I'll let Mr. Jones go first.
Yeah, Cliff, I remember that a resident of Hidden Valley who wanted water, as you know, they're on wells over there, pulled up to a hydrant here and filled a water truck and took it and used it. You may know what I'm referring to. Have we taken steps to prevent that sort of stealing of water in the future?
We keep very close track of our construction meters, which is how that was actually being used, it was a construction meter. And we make sure those are only for active construction sites at this point in time.
So we, that won't happen again, then? Is that right?
We hope not.
Well, we don't want to do just hope.
Well, we, Councilmember Jones, we actually were alerted to that situation because we monitor construction meters, right? We found a situation in which more water was being pumped out of that construction meter than we thought should have, and so we, it was actually an example of how we monitor those situations.
Well, I mean, have we taken steps to prevent that in the future?
We monitor them, we monitor our construction meters very closely. In fact, we visit those sites weekly and look at what's going on versus how much water's being used, so.
Well, this present shortage may accelerate people who want to try to do that. And so I think we may, maybe need to keep that up a little more than we have in the past, especially, I don't know what's going on with the wells in Hidden Valley, but they've had problems over there, and I don't imagine that they're very happy right now.
So when a, when a construction meter is signed off on, there's legal requirements associated with how it's used, right? And that's why that case, correct me if I'm wrong, that ended up in court, correct, over that, that particular issue.
Yes, I believe so, and it was resolved. I'm not sure exactly how. But we will, we are increasing enforcement. Obviously, we have lots of, lots of additional enforcement we're doing, and Mayor Protem Jones, we will, we will definitely add that to our list of things to make sure we're covered.
Well, is there a way to lock those hydrants so they can only be opened with a key or a combination or something?
Yeah, there's, there's ways that we can secure those.
Well, maybe I'll talk to you about it later. I would appreciate if we would do that.
Being an old firefighter, I wouldn't want to see a lock on a hydrant, but I think, I think your point is well-taken, that we'd need to encourage folks, if they see something unusual like that, to alert us so that we can better enforce. Go ahead, Mr. McNamee.
Thank you. To the gentleman asking about the quality of the pipes and how much leakage, it's a reasonable concern. One of the techniques is simply looking at how much water is released to Thousand Oaks from our water supplier, that's Cuyahoga, and you add up all the consumption at the households and industry, and the difference would be water loss to possibly leaking pipes. The other point to that is that Israel has a company there that developed a wonderful ultrasound system that could identify even small leaks early on so they can be addressed, so much so that when I spoke with the manager of the Detroit Water System about this, he says, "We have enough problems putting down more pipe, let alone going back and fixing 100-year-old pipes that are leaking." So it's maybe perhaps Mr. Finley and Nader that we look at that a little bit to see if we want to incorporate that. If we don't have leakage happening, it's not worth doing, but on the other hand, it may be worth, because yes, the life expectancy of our pipes that are over 60 may be an issue, and you always do a very good job of maintaining the quality of our systems, and that's why we don't have huge disasters happening here, and I thank you for that proactive approach. I'd like to also extend to council, my expertise as an instructor at Ventura College in their Water Science Department, where I train the women and men that go into our water treatment plants and prepare the water that we drink every day. Also, I'm rated as a T2 operator and a D2 distribution operator there with the state of California. So I know a little bit about water, and I'd be more than happy, if you want me to lean in and lend my expertise on that panel in the committee, to help look for regional solutions. I've been looking at it for about the last four or five years, long before I was on council, because I knew this was going to happen at some point, kind of prepared for it to this day. So if council's open to that, I'd be more than happy to throw my name into the hat and see if you folks want me to move forward with that.
I'm glad you reminded of our conversation earlier today. Well, I'll have to discuss it with some of my other council members, and then we'll make a selection for someone to help represent the city at that, at that group. Very good. Any other comments? Any other questions?
Prepared to make a motion?
Very good. We have a motion?
Yeah, move 10B, that we adopt a Level IV water supply shortage. Your point, Councilmember McNamee, is our designate to the drought response tax force. And number two, with the appropriations for enforcement and education.
Does that cover the concerns of the pool industry?
I think maybe, Dr. Cox, can you repeat for me at least? The restriction does not preclude any new pool, just some repair and drainage of pools that, and then the encouragement or the requirement for bubble covers which will reduce evaporation. Is that, is that similar to what some of our members were talking about? But, just, just so everybody knows, at this point, we don't allow any other questions, but I'll entertain your questions since you got it out. Go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Just to confirm, there's no restrictions on the construction of new pools or the filling of pools that are currently permitted or under construction are allowed to be filled. The restrictions that we put in place are for draining and refilling pools, but if that draining and refilling has to be done for maintenance purposes, then the applicant can apply to the city for a waiver for that purpose. So for example, if someone needs to drain it in order to address a leak or some other maintenance issue, they can apply to the city to do that. And then the other measure that affects pools is the requirement that they are covered.
Thank you. When I used to have a pool, bubble covers were golden, so I would encourage everybody to do that, really saves on your water.
Thank you, Dr. Cox, and all that that you just said was in the staff report and is obviously in my motion. Yes, it is.
Well, thank you for clarifying, Councilmember Adam.
I'd be happy to clarify that, yes.
Any other comments?
We have no plans at this time to restrict new pool construction.
Any other comments or questions? Go ahead, go ahead, this, Bill Delapena.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Yes, certainly I will support the motion. And again, this is primarily really to reduce outwater, outwater, outside or outdoor water use. And that is where all of our water's being wasted, and I hope that those that are using water excessively will be held accountable. And I think we all know that that is what costs the most and wastes the most, and apartments are the most efficient units regarding water. I asked that question only because that question was posed probably 80 times, and so I ask it just for the public to be, to know what, what's on people's minds. Yes, and with that, I would approve the motion. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bill Delapena?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We have a third presentation tonight, and this regards urban lot splitting. I'm going to turn over the introductions of our, of our panel to our city manager, Drew Powers, since these are the first, first presentations to council by these two members. Welcome to city council, and we're looking forward to hearing from you.
So they're, they're no strangers to, to council and watching, but their first presentations for both Noel Duran, Assistant City Attorney, and Justine Kendall, who is in our planning, with our planning team. And both of them relatively new to our organization, reflective of a lot of the new talent coming up through, and excited to hear from them this evening.
Please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we're going to be discussing municipal code amendment initiation for SB-
If you could come a little bit closer to the mic.
Is that better? Thank you. Tonight, we're going to be discussing municipal code amendment initiation with regard to SB9 The request this evening is to adopt a resolution initiating municipal code amendment 2022-70465 to consider a code amendment to implement SB9, including establishing a process to allow for urban lot splits and the creation of two-unit residential developments. This request is based on the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 9-4.2902. A proposed municipal code amendment may be initiated by the city council this evening. That would direct Planning Commission to hold a hearing and make a recommendation back to the city council, whereat the city council would take final action on that amendment. So with regard to SB9, we'll start with a couple of the basics. SB9, which went into effect at the beginning of this year, is intended to help address California's housing shortage by expanding opportunities for construction of residential units. Since the beginning of the year, staff has been researching the bill. We've reviewed analysis by various entities and reviewed SB9 implementation by other jurisdictions. Our staff is now ready to draft an implementation ordinance specifically tailored to this community. SB9 requires cities to ministerially approve a two-lot subdivision and/or a two-unit development project per lot, provided that the development project meets certain criteria. Some of that criteria includes location. The project must be within a single-family residential zone. It must not be within a historic zone and must not be within a sensitive area. And sensitive areas include such areas as earthquake fault zones, land subject to conservation easements, flood plains, and high-fire hazard severity zones. With regard to high-fire hazard severity zones, there are exceptions, so it doesn't apply to all of them. One of the exceptions is if there has been, adopted a fire hazard mitigation measure pursuant to an existing building standard or state fire mitigation measure applicable to the development. I just want to point that out, because there's been a lot of concern with regard to the high-fire areas and whether or not you can have a SB9 project there. In addition, it can't be within existing housing areas. The project may not demolish or alter certain housing areas, which are specifically defined in SB9. With regard to subdivisions, the new lots must be roughly proportional. They must be at least 1,200 square feet. They may not have been previously split via an urban lot split, and must not have been, must not be adjacent to a lot split by a person who's, quote, "acting in concert," end quote, with the owner. All right, so with regard to the approval process, an SB9 project shall be ministerially approved unless the building official can determine in writing, based on the preponderance of evidence, that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety or the physical environment that can't be mitigated. So that's a very high standard. There are some requirements of the owner. They must attest, with regard to a lot split, that they are going to live on the property for at least three years. They can be for residential uses only, and you may not have short-term rentals at the SB9 projects. There are some things that cities can do. The cities may impose objective zoning standards, objective subdivision standards, and objective design review standards. However, those standards may not have the effect of physically precluding two units on either of the parcels, or would result in a unit size of less than 800 square feet. There are some restrictions on those standards. Cities must allow side and rear setbacks of four feet. Cities can only require one off-street parking space, and in some instances, may not require parking if it's near certain transit locations. Must allow for up to 800 square feet units, and they may not require dedications of right-of-way or require construction of off-site improvements. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Justine, and she's going to discuss some of the options that cities do have.
Thank you, Noel. And to give a little bit more, I guess, context for the process here, it's very similar to the way the ADU, the state ADU law was implemented in the city. So while the state law limits the city's ability to regulate in certain ways that we just discussed, the city may implement objective standards to control many other aspects of the review process and the design of a project. For example, in projects that propose a lot split, the city is able to include standards related to minimum lot widths, to restrict or prohibit flag lots, and to specify particular access requirements, such as the width of a driveway or a type of pedestrian access required, and different access requirements if a split is proposed or if it is not. For two-unit development, state law states specific requirements, but again, also gives cities the flexibility to create these objective standards that would guide development on eligible properties, as long as, again, they don't preclude the development of two 800-square-foot units on each lot. And it's important to note that the objective standards recently adopted by city council would apply to these projects. So in addition to those, supplementary or different objective standards and requirements can be incorporated into the ordinance to be adopted. These could include specifications for things like height and number of stories, the amount of demolition allowed for certain units, setbacks, including those permitted for front yards, second stories, and landlocked parcels. Parking standards could also be adopted. Only one space per unit can be required, however, those spaces could be required to be enclosed in an individual or shared garage, shared tandem spaces as well. And then there are other design standards to consider that may build on what is already required per those objective standards recently adopted, such as directing placement of second-story windows, open space requirements, things like that. One of the most important areas of flexibility is maximum unit size. The absolute smallest floor area the city has to allow per state law is 800 square feet per unit, but the city can allow units that are larger. For example, unit size could be set to match current ADU law, which escalates the size allowed per number of bedrooms provided, and ties the size of attached or converted units to what is already existing on site. Or the size of units could be controlled by something like lot coverage, which simply limits the total amount of structure on the site, rather than specifying the size of each unit. Some of these standards can also be tied to incentives, for example, where the city would like to encourage a certain type or style of development, for instance, the conversion of existing structures or the enclosure of parking. Desirable allowances could be made, such as a larger unit size or discounted basement square footage or greater height. Although there are standards where the city is bound, again, by state law, incentives may be used to encourage more attractive design, again, something like an increased Our recommendation this evening is to adopt resolution, a resolution initiating municipal code amendment 2022-70465 to consider a code amendment to implement SB9, including establishing a process to allow for urban lot splits and the creation of two-unit residential developments. Our next steps, staff, would be to- Our next steps, staff, would be to continue doing research and analysis to draft an ordinance to bring to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation, and then bring that to City Council for review and final action. We are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Nice job on your first run. Looking for questions, we do have Councilman McNamee with a question.
Thank you for that wonderful presentation and welcome. So what I'm understanding is that in a single-family resident neighborhood, what the state is saying that they can do is come into our city and take one of those lots and make it into, instead of a single-family home, it could now become two homes? Is that what you mean by dual lots? I'm not clear what you mean by that.
So SB9 requires the city to ministerially approve a two-unit residential project, so which is what you described, so going from one unit to two units, and also a urban lot split, which would split the existing single-family lot into two lots.
So that split could be in the form of, let's say, a flag lot, as or if it's wide enough to split it into two, so you have neighbors side by side, so if it's large enough, you could do it side by side, or one behind the other? Is that what we're saying?
So we're required to allow for the lot split. How those lots are arranged, the city does have some discretion on, on flag lots and access?
Okay. And again, this is another example where I look at a housing shortage we have here in California, but Sacramento's answer is to impose their will upon the cities to change their look and feel. And when I am now coming up to speed reading about CEQA, our environmental impact report that needs to be done on our neighborhoods, or any construction developments, apartment buildings, whatever the case may be, is CEQA, the environmental impact report, part of SB9? Is that going to be required in this neighborhood-type environment?
No. SB9 specifically excludes these projects from CEQA.
So we can impose CEQA, environment impact reports, on apartments, or homes, or things of that nature, but yet Sacramento is exempting themselves from those requirements of environmental impact report? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Well, they're exempting these projects from CEQA, yes.
Okay. And is there any explanation why a house, or an apartment, or duplex, fourplex, outside of this, of SB9, is required perhaps to do an environmental impact report? But this decision out of Sacramento, SB9, is exempt? It doesn't make sense. Why is one different than the other? If CEQA is not that important, environmental impact reports aren't that important, then why are we imposing that upon other construction that is outside of SB9?
If I may, Mayor, and—
Please go ahead.
—councilmember McNamee. Certainly, your point about Sacramento making a decision for SB9 to exempt it from a CEQA review is accurate. That's exactly what they did, and they do that in certain circumstances. Sometimes they do it with a large construction of a sports facility, for example, or something of that nature. But when you look at CEQA for infill production, CEQA has various exemptions. So there is a environmental analysis done on many of these types of constructions, whether it's a single-family unit or a larger, you know, a fourplex, for example. But most of those, or many of those, are going to be found exempt under the category exemptions that are permitted under CEQA. So yes, there is an analysis done for that, but most of them do not go more than finding that exemption. For example, in 15301, which is Class 1 exemption, a single-family unit, a house would be one of those exactly listed as an exemption. So for, I mean, you are correct in the fact that Sacramento made a very specific decision for SB9, but as far as other types of similar construction, you're going to find that most of them are going to be held exempt.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. Mayor?
Thank you. Other questions from my colleagues? I, we do have one speaker. I find myself in the, in the position of somewhat agreeing with my colleague, Mr. McNamee. It does irritate me that the state has stepped in, in this area and effectively removed some of our control over our single-family residence neighborhoods. My question, I think, is, is this a problem, or is this an opportunity, in some ways, for people to, is it city-wide that this is available, or are there certain areas of the city that will be unavailable for this type of thing, for fire reasons or for other, other purposes? The lot isn't big enough? What percentage of the city, if you looked at at all, that would be subject to this I mean, I guess you don't have to have a specific number, but is this something that is going to be city-wide, or is it's going to be restricted to specific areas?
Yeah, but generally speaking, it's going to be city-wide. The project is going to have to meet all of the criteria of SB9 and whatever regulations that the city puts in place.
Okay, so we, and my understanding is that we can require that certain objective standards would help us to dictate where these would go and how they would look? Is that correct?
That's correct. I want to clarify as well that these are only allowed in single-family residential zones. So that is, those are specific areas within the city as well, and given the layout and restrictions and characteristics of many lots, the ability to build these types of lots and to provide access and things like that is, is naturally limiting to many properties.
Thank you.
I was going to say, Mayor—
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead, please, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of the questions, if you don't mind, but go, go ahead with your explanation, and I'll get to you, Ed, just one second.
Sure. I, I think it was said earlier during the presentation, but again, single-family home areas zoned for a single family. Similar to our ADU regulations that we have, the state is mandating that we have the SB9 applications. What they are providing us is an opportunity for the city to adopt standards and regulations that would allow us, since we adopt them and we have them, and we can use those, those objective standards, to evaluate a little bit more than, than what the state allows. If we don't have them, then the state's going to, you're going to follow the state requirement. So no matter what, we're going to have these applications, and if we don't have regulations in our code that we've adopted, we're stuck with following the broader state requirements.
No, I, I appreciate that. That's why I think it's good for us to look at these different options that we might have to better regulate where these units might go. In the same way, we went through, gosh, a two-year, two-year process just recently on our land use element that we're going to use for our general plan. That was a two-year process. I hope that we have that type of process, not a two-year process, but that type of approach that will help us place these units where it's most advantageous. I have two other questions, if you don't mind, Ed, and I'll get right to you. You mentioned that the builder of these units, the, needs to be a owner-occupier for three years, and they sign an affidavit. Is there any way, other than them signing an affidavit, that we actually can force that to happen?
Yeah, that's a good question. So SB9 requires, with a lot split, that the property owner sign an affidavit saying that they will be owner-occupied for three years from the date that the lot split is approved. One of the things that the cities can do, and other jurisdictions have done that, require that that affidavit be recorded, right, so everybody is aware of it. And it certainly, enforcement would be difficult in that short period of time, but, but yeah, there would be enforcement options.
That, that's my, one of my concerns, is the enforcement of that. You're going to have a copyright, for instance, and by the time you get enforcement on a copyright, you've lost the copyright. So that's, that's a concern of mine down the road, and I hope that we, as we go through this, we look at good ways to enforce things. And then my final question is, I understand that within transit locations, there's going to be no requirement for off-street parking. Do we have any transit locations in town? That would be of concern for us.
No, none of the exceptions for that parking standard would apply in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what I said several months ago when we first had SB9 brought to our attention. I think it's a terribly flawed law. I think it's, has the potential for ruining some of our lovely neighborhoods here in Thousand Oaks. I don't like that is, CEQA does not apply to it, and I, I believe that a lot of the provisions that I understand are really ones that do not protect people who believe that they have moved into a nice semi-rural, large-lot subdivision, only to find that someone could divide his lot and then later build two houses on each new lot. You know, and all of a sudden, you would find that you're, thought you're in a nice neighborhood, and all of a sudden, you're living next to four small houses on what you thought was a single-family lot. I, I think they were, you know, had good intentions. I, I don't fault them for trying to have affordable housing, but I don't think this is the way to do it. So for very many reasons, I am going to try to be part of a movement to either remove or replace SB9 in its present form. And in the meantime, I really, although I understand the reason for this being on our agenda, but I'd just like to make it clear that I think SB9 has a very terrible potential for the city of Thousand Oaks. And I just think a lot of wonderful neighborhoods could be ruined with this in, in place. So I intend to, intend to oppose this item, the item C, and I intend to work to try to either remove or modify SB9 in the future to get it on the ballot—
Yeah, I think—
—so that we don't have to deal with it anymore. I think—
Mayor.
To sum up, I think they had, you know, good intentions to create affordable housing, but I think there's a terrible way to try to do it. So I'm opposed to it.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. And, and Councilmember Jones, I certainly appreciate your comments. I do want to make it clear for all of you tonight that SB9 is the law. We, we are, we're being responsive to the opportunity tonight to initiate a code amendment to evaluate if the city can take actions and take steps, regulations and standards that you would adopt to lessen the impact that might happen under SB9. So I do want to make it clear that SB9 is, is currently the law. If we, if we, if we don't amend it, any applicant, any applicant can certainly still go forward with an application under SB9, and we would have to honor that application and take steps forward. So I, I want to make that clear for the, for all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Before I get to Councilmember McNamee, Councilmember Adam has not had a chance to talk, so let me give him a chance.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, well, unfortunately, there's no point relitigating SB9. As Patrick said, it's a law of the land. The Democrats pushed it through. Newsom signed it, came into law January 1st, 2022, and this is what we're faced with. And it is far-reaching. It's going to affect, I mean, 75% of single-family homes are zoned in the state of California. 75%. It's a huge number. And yeah, it's controversial. 50% of the California cities oppose the law. You know, it, it, it's, including Thousand Oaks. You bring up a good point, Clody. The city of Thousand Oaks sent an opposition letter to the state. In fact, Southern California Association of Governments, which I just came from, also opposed this law. But the fact of the matter is, it is the law. There was an initiative that actually failed to make, make the ballot because there weren't enough signatures. The, what was it called? The Friendly Neighborhood Initiative or something, to try to get it on the ballot in 2022, failed. Couldn't do it. So what we're faced with tonight is accepting the fact that this is the law, and how can we best set up objective standards to make sure if this comes to fruition in our city, it's in the best possible quality? And I'll tell you, it probably is going to happen. I was looking on the internet today, there's a couple of companies already out there. Homestead, San Diego Casitas, we are ready to finance your SB9 projects. Maximize your property financial potential, free consultation. So right away, free enterprise capitalism, you're standing there and trying to help people get these projects off the ground. And I think we've had some inquiries. I don't think we've had any specific applications yet, but we've had inquiries. So anyway, we need to, I really hope that you guys come back to us with a really good list of objective standards. And for my money, I'd like to see you include the affordability component. I think that's, that's important. And there's just a, you know, you look at different cities, they're looking at the size, they're looking at the parking, the, you mentioned the flag lots, whether they should have garages or driveways, what the shape of the lot, the setbacks, whether the people living in them should even be allowed to own a vehicle. Couple of cities are looking at that. Should they be LEED certified? Should there be a certain type of landscaping? What about street parking? Height, building forms, porches? Is there a landmark historic site? All these things are being incorporated because, you know, different cities have a different approach to these things. Some cities are in favor, but others make it kind of stringent. So anyway, I'm just hoping you give us a really good menu of stuff to look at when it comes to these standards, because that's what we have to work with now. You know, whether we like it or not, it's the law. And these objective design standards could certainly help us make sure that if it does come to fruition, we can, we come up with a quality project.
And we, thank you, Mr. Adam. We stringently oppose this at the state level—
Yes, we did.
—and I'm hoping that, as, as you mentioned, that as we look, as we go forward to try to implement this law, that we are looking at ways to use our objective standards to make sure that it's a quality product for Thousand Oaks.
Definitely.
Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jones, I am so on board with what you're saying, and I agree with you 100%. I am of the opinion that Sacramento does have good intentions, but as the saying goes, the road to hell is paved often with good intentions. And yes, it will change our neighborhoods forever. This gives us the ability to at least control what we can control. I would like to come back and ask the question of staff the following. An affidavit is simply stating, "In the last three years, you have lived in this residence under penalty of perjury." Do you know how many times that is signed and never enforced or verified? It's not worth the piece of paper it's written on. We have, as a city, have the ability, though, to go out a couple of times a year. City of Thousand Oaks, is the person who owns this house home? Who are you? Oh, you're the renter. Thank you very much. That, to me, Mr. Powers, is worth looking at, that we do something like code enforcement to verify that they truly are living in that home. Because a lot of fraud takes place in the United States based on the honesty of the person, but the person often says, "What are my chances of being caught?" That's now the moral norm we have out there. And a program like this, I don't want to see people come in and take advantage of SB9 at the detriment of the neighbors that are in the neighborhood. So option for us to look at. What are your thoughts, Steph?
Certainly will be, as Steph was saying, that's certainly going to be one of the areas that they look at when they come back to opt with options for the council. Moving into a proactive versus reactive code enforcement is a shift for the council, so that would be something the council would really need to weigh. There's, you know, depending on where these numbers goes, resource allocation that would need to be made for something like that, but we'll, we'll certainly provide the council options.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Could those code enforcement people also do sign enforcement or something like that?
Just in quick context, Bob, you were asking about how much Thousand Oaks this could affect. Now, this isn't Thousand Oaks, but UC Berkeley did do a study, and they said 97% of the state would remain status quo. However, that leaves 3%, which is still a lot.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Bill de la Peña, you had a comment or question?
More of a comment, thank you, Mayor Engler. One of the reasons the city opposed SB nine was because SB nine does not provide or specifically calls out affordability. That was one of the reasons. And we have seen ADUs in the city of Thousand Oaks being built at unaffordable prices. SB nine now is dealing us the same dilemma in that there are no teeth in this law that says cities have to provide affordable housing. And so that is a primary concern that I have. And I would want to see that when we come back with objective standards and all that, that we look at what can we do in order to see, what can we do to make units more affordable? I mean, that really is the issue. Yes, there is a housing crisis in California, but more so, it's an affordability crisis. And if we cannot work successfully in that area, then, you know, building all the units in the world, what is it, 15,000 units in Thousand Oaks, is not going to help those who simply don't make all that much money. And as we know, low income is considered a family of four making just under $90,000 a year. And that is a lot of money, but that is, again, that is your teacher, that is your substitute teacher, and I can go on and on and on. The inclusionary housing ordinance cannot come soon enough, and it is my fervent hope that with these amendments proposed tonight, that we are able to make even the slightest dent in affordability. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, and thank you, councilmembers, for your comments on this issue. And to discuss specifically the affordability component, it is something that, at your direction, staff will look at. I do want to caution you that, at this time, this is a very new regulation, and there are cities or agencies who are proposing an affordable component to their SB nine ordinances. However, those have not been tested. We need to review those. And again, that's the only caution I give you is that there's been, there's an underlying purpose stated by the state, and that is to create more housing, right? And you cannot create ordinances that are so unduly burdensome to that creation of housing. And if they see that in your ordinances, then that is something they're going to, HCD will take a look at. So it's not saying that we're not going to take a look at that. I just want to caution you that it's not clear that we can do that affordable component to it or include it in the inclusionary housing analysis, but it's certainly something that we're going to consider. Again, continue our research. We've been doing that already. It's just that there's no great answer yet because there's been no case law on it. There's been a couple of cases that have been filed, but those are way, way far away, and they're not necessarily, when I say way far away, from being resolved. So we don't have any case right now that we can say, "Ah, we have an answer for the affordability component or for including it in the inclusionary housing where you make them pay a fee to, or for us to use for housing."
Yeah, you're right, actually. You walk a fine line. You know, are we putting enough in there because we want a quality project? Are we putting so much in there because we wanted thwart SB nine? And that's where HCD takes a pretty hard look at this stuff. So, and you're right, a lot of it is new frontier, you know? But I think we can get an affordability component in there.
I don't think we, any of us have the intention of thwarting SB nine since it is-
Some cities do, Bob.
Some cities, some cities try, and they, you know, say they have a mountain lion habitat in their downtown that, and they've been sued already.
Or the entire city's an historic designation which would prevent it. That's not going to fly.
Which doesn't fly. No, if you try to, like I say, I don't have any intention of trying to thwart this, but if there's, I believe, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the attorneys in the room, that it's silent on the affordability issue. It doesn't say one way or the other. If that's important to us, I think we should ask our staff to look into that and see what the extent that we can require, that sort of thing. It doesn't do us really too much good for arena numbers or anything really to build a bunch of market-rate housing. So that's something we should be looking at definitely. But I appreciate the attorneys in the room saying that there's the fine line that we need to draw, where we are compliant with SB nine and living with the spirit of SB nine, but also achieving the goal of getting some affordability in town.
Mayor, the reality of-
Go ahead.
-requiring a low-income component to this for affordable housing actually dissuades people from putting these in because they're not going to make the income back through rent to build it by making it affordable. If your normal market rate would be $3,000 a month for that second unit that you build, but yet you're only getting 500 because that's what the county says that you can charge, then that project's not moving forward. So that would be a deterrent from moving forward with a low-income component to this, in my opinion, from looking at it from an economic standpoint. But we'll see how it washes out.
That may well be true. I just, I think it's important for the city to be looking at all aspects of it.
I agree. But I'm just saying, it may not work.
It may or may not work, but if we don't look at the, open that door, we won't know.
It might be viewed as a barrier.
Mr. Mayor, could I have?
You may, you may speak. You have much more-
Point of clarification.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Attorney, if we do not adopt a resolution declaring intention to consider an amendment to the municipal code to implement SB nine, are these, is this implementation of it going to be forced upon us, whether we do this or not?
SB nine's already been adopted, and so it is the law right now.
So you're looking at this a little bit as a self-defense-
Correct.
-mechanism to try, let me finish.
Sorry.
To try to have standards that would be more compatible with the type of community that we want to have. You know, this is like trying to make, I don't know what the analogy is, but trying to make something pretty out of something ugly. I don't, I don't really see how this can be saved in its present form. And I'm sorry that initiative didn't make it. I was going to help participate in that and got some forms, then I heard that happened. But I, you know, I, it seems strange to adopt something to help implement something that you don't want to do. But if this is a self-defense measure in which we can put provisions into the implementation of this that would be more easy to live with, I guess it's something, at least we're just going to consider the amendment, right? If we go forward.
So you hit-
Then we get to see what the amendment's going to be, and then we can choose at that time whether we want to support it or not support it.
So in its simplest terms, Councilman, or Mayor Protem Jones, what you're looking at is, today, if we receive an application that comes in, we're responsible to process it ministerially with no additional restrictions or overlays, exactly explicitly what's in the state law. If the council chooses to have an additional layer on top of this, which is those items we're talking about tonight, then you need to initiate this process. That's it. Either go with the state law as exactly as it's written, or add those provisions that the state has given us the authority to look at, and that's why we're bringing the question to you.
Well, it's, it's like trying to improve something that's so imperfect that it's beyond improving. I'd rather get rid of it and start over again.
Mr. Jones, it's like putting lipstick on a pig. It's still a pig.
Okay.
Okay, we do have a gentleman waiting patiently online for our public comments. So I'd like to, if we have no further comments, please, can we get to our gentleman citizen? Very good. Mr. Piper, you are our speaker. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name's Jackson Piper. I live in, unincorporated, Newbury Park. Been resident here for over 30 years. And I'm going to start by saying probably the unpopular thing. I think that if not SB nine, then some form of statewide bill similar to it is a necessary thing, just because, as Councilmember Adam noted earlier, of the land in California that contains some form of built environment, 75% of that is single-family housing. And so that really dominates throughout California, and it's not hard to make a leap from that to the fact that we have severe housing crisis in terms of affordability and also access to the certain kinds of housing that might be a little more within reach of lower-income people. So I believe that this will be, that you should go forward with this process. I believe that it will be necessary to tailor it to Thousand Oaks, but I think it's also an opportunity, going back to the previous item of discussion, to try and look at how, you know, new construction throughout Thousand Oaks, throughout the single-family neighborhoods, including these new SB nine units, could maximize efficiency in terms of water and other utilities, both within the construction and on the properties that are created, to capture water, to minimize waste. I think there's a good opportunity there. And I think that the realistic outcome of what SB nine is entailing in Thousand Oaks is not actually going to be that severe. Looking at Thousand Oaks' single-family properties, a lot of them are sort of squareish with a rectangular house at the front of them and a yard at the back. I would like to see flag lots allowed because of that, because otherwise, I don't think there's realistically going to be that much potential for constructing houses under, duplexes under SB nine. But I also think there are not going to be a lot of people that own single-family homes in Thousand Oaks that are going to be chomping at the bit to tear down their house or find some other way of adding the extra units. So it'll happen, and I think it should happen, but I don't think it's going to be very widespread. So all that said, please, please adopt, you know, go forward with this and encourage, where you can, more density in our single-family neighborhoods without changing their character drastically. If you could add affordability component by incentivizing it, I think that would be great. I don't think you can mandate it, and I think the state won't let you, but please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for being so patient tonight. Very good. That's our only speaker on this topic tonight. Any other discussion? Yes, Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Okay, I move, I move staff recommendation to adopt the resolution declaring an intention to consider an amendment to SB nine and also look at the possibility of an affordability component.
Yeah, it's really imperative that we face up to this. You know, Housing and Community Development has a oversight department, and 29 cities have been, have registered complaints against them so far for either having overly stringent or having no restrictions or no objectives. And the next thing you know, we'll be with the Housing Accountability Unit, if we're not careful, which is, you know, the enforcement division of one of the state's agencies. But anyway, I agree with Claudia. You know, we need to face up to this and come up with a plan, and I'm sure staff will give us a lot of options to consider.
Very good. The only thing I would add is, I think it was mentioned by staff, that the alternative to not looking into this is the state's kind of boilerplate approach that would not serve Thousand Oaks very well. By looking at our objective standards, by looking at an affordability issue if possible, by looking at the other aspects of what would work best here in implementing this state law, that's where we could put our Thousand Oaks stamp on it. Otherwise, it's just whatever, whatever the state has in the code that we'd have to follow. So with that, I would call for the vote. Ms. Rodriguez.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
I vote aye, but I reserve the right to, as everybody would, to vote no if I don't like what is produced here. Thank you.
Mayor Engler?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We have a couple of quick reports to do tonight, and then we do have a closed session later, so we will get through these as quickly as possible. Myself and Councilmember Adam attended the Southern California Association of Governments Conference. It's always illustrative to me to go to these conferences and find that the problems that we find here in Thousand Oaks are also common problems to other areas of the state. The Southern California Association of Governments, of course, is the, is it the nine counties in the south here that have got, get together and form discussion committees and come up with policies? One of those policies was to oppose Proposition Nine, or Senate Bill Nine. But it was time well spent, in my opinion. One of the, one of the cities, City of Ontario, is doing similar things to what we're doing. They are looking at moving their housing, their multi-resident housing, to underutilized commercial and retail areas. One of the, one of the presenters talked about funding sources and saying that funding sources for affordable housing, you must use every stone. You can't leave any stone unturned. Do not, do not look at any funding source as something you don't want to investigate. And then quite a bit of talk about a clean energy future. We do have that zero emissions by 2045. That is the state's goal, and lots of talk about how to achieve that. I also attended last week the Cal Cities Leadership Summit up in Sacramento. Again, most of the cities that attended, from rural areas out in Central Valley to us here on the coast, are all looking at affordability issues of their, of the housing stock. The staffing of cities, and I'm sure the city manager could agree with this, staffing of bringing in appropriate and highly talented staff, we just had two of our new members here presenting to us tonight, is challenging for everybody in the state of California. To a certain degree, there's cannibalization going on among staff, and we have to recruit very hard to get our good people. The other, the other thing that we did up in Sacramento was that we did meet with our representatives, both Gil Topete in Senator Stern's office and in with Brandon Bajurki in Assemblymember Irwin's office. While we were there, the state announced its surplus, and we approached both of our, both of our assembly members and discussed how perhaps this surplus can flow more directly to the cities. And the trailer bills that are coming out after the budget is set and everything, hopefully will include money that is coming directly to the cities for some of the projects that we talked about tonight that might help with our water issues and everything else. So time well spent. We flew the City of Thousand Oaks flag. We know, they know us well up there, and the more face time we get with everybody, the City manager, do you have some comments?
Yeah, just- Yeah, just briefly, before we call a closed session, we'll be back here three weeks from tonight, on the 14th. And on that evening, we'll have our lighting and landscaping district public hearing, ballot tally, and we will have a public hearing on a development proposal for the Kmart site with IMT as the applicant. That is three weeks from tonight, on the 14th of June.
And Acting City Attorney, do we have a closed session?
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mayor. We are calling a closed session on existing litigation. The case is Suzanne Rosenthal versus City of Thousand Oaks, case number 56201953. And this closed session is pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Subpart A. Thank you.
Very good. Do you anticipate any results?
Thank you. I do not anticipate that we have anything to report out after this meeting.
Very good. With that, thank you all for hanging in there with us tonight, some very good topics. And we will be coming back here by June 14th for discussions.
Good night.